Okay, I call the order of this meeting of the 34th City Council for May 7, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Just to like to remind everybody in the audience to please shut off any cell phones or any devices as to not disturb the meeting. There is an overflow room too, is there, or not set up?
They can go in there. They're not set up.
All right. Mr. Clerk, can we have the roll?
Councilmember Inos.
Here.
Councilmember Hamud.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Paris.
Here.
Councilmember El-Sawafi.
Here.
Councilmember Herrick. Council President Serini.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Okay, at this time, it's my pleasure to introduce Pastor Josh Levecq from Dearborn's Baptist Church, who will give our invocation at tonight's meeting. Everyone who's able, please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, thank you so much for this great city. Thank you for this wonderful place that we get to live. I pray that you would be with the meeting tonight and the procession that is going on, Lord. Thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy. Thank you for this democratic process that we have, Lord. Thank you for the freedom that we have to live and to worship, Lord, freely according to our conscience. Thank you for the freedom that we have of speech, Lord, to express our concerns. Lord, I pray that Dearborn always be a place where free speech and expression are always protected, Lord. Every voice can be heard and valued. Lord, I pray tonight for this council, that you would help them to do the jobs that they've been elected to do, Lord, to lead us well and to make wise decisions for this city and for our future. Lord, I pray tonight for our mayor, Lord, that you would give him wisdom, Lord, guide him, help him to lead this city in the way that we should go. And I pray that you would protect our city, Lord. I pray for those that protect us. I pray for our first responders, our police, Lord. I pray for our chief of police, that you would help them as they help us, Lord, that you would guide them, protect them, and, Lord, that you would bless them in their lives. And, Lord, I pray for this meeting, that it would accomplish the purpose that it's set forth to do, and, Lord, that everyone here would be heard and that good decisions would be made, and you would guide this city, and, Lord, help us to all do our part. We ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Where's the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'd like to just to keep a little order. I know there's not a lot of room, so we're gonna try to... We didn't anticipate this crowd tonight, so my apologies. We have a couple of council resolutions that are gonna come forward. Yeah, thank you. And what we'll do is we'll have those first come forward that might have some of the soccer players and so on be able to exit the room, and there'll be some more room for others. So at this time, there is three of these. I'd like to read them into the record as the council. I'm gonna have Councilman El-Sawafi also give some... Since he offered these, then what we'll do is we'll have the entire council come down and we'll take each three individuals as they are. So, Mr. Clerk, the first resolution?
Item number four, resolution by Councilmember El-Sawafi, supported unanimously, acknowledging Abbas Al-Wash for his dedication to Michigan FC, a nonprofit soccer club for kids and refugee children, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The next three items are acknowledgements of local nonprofits, soccer coaches Abbas Al-Wash, Mohammed Nasser, and Samir Al-Nassr. These citations were brought forward by Councilman El-Sawafi. Would you like to say a few words on this one?
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Council President. I proudly commend Mr. Abbas, Samir, and Mr. Nasser for their exceptional dedication to their individual soccer clubs. Through their leadership, these nonprofit soccer clubs have become a beacon of opportunity for children and young adults, especially those from low-income households, fostering not just athletic skills, but also essential values like teamwork and resilience. Their tireless efforts are shaping future athletes and leaders, enriching our community in profound ways. On behalf of the City Council, I wholeheartedly support their efforts and grateful for their individual contributions to our city's youth. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. And unanimous roll shall be attached. Mr. Clerk, can we have the next item?
Item number five, resolution by Councilmember El-Sawafi, supported unanimously, acknowledging Samir Al-Nassr for his dedication to Dearborn United Club and requesting immediate effect.
Again, this is for Samir Al-Nassr, the coach of the Dearborn United Club. Councilman El-Sawafi?
So again, I truly appreciate all your work. I know you're getting towards the end of your retirement here, but 20-plus years of service to our community of enriching young adults, really appreciate it, sir. Thank you so much to keep up the good work.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item number six, resolution by Councilmember El-Sawafi, supported unanimously, acknowledging Mohammed M. Nasser for his dedication to Michigan Yemen Sports Association and requesting immediate effect.
All right, and then this is also Mohammed Nasser, the coach of the Michigan Yemeni Sports Association. Councilman?
Thank you so much. So again, three individuals, stars in our communities, who have been outspoken and supportive of our youth tirelessly, tirelessly, day in and day out, especially during the summer, they're out there training these kids. I visited them and seen their hard work. So again, I appreciate you, gentlemen. A lot of good people in our city, just like you are, working hard, but specifically today we wanted to recognize. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman El-Sawafi. And the unanimous roll shall be attached. Okay, at this time, I would like the council to step down, and we will take the first group for a photo, which would be the Michigan Nonprofit Soccer Club for Kids. Is that... Yes. Abbas Al-Wash? Okay, yes, thank you. Absolutely. Jackie, you got the camera?
Do you want to invite all the families?
I was gonna say that.
He'll tell you the story later.
You came at the best date. Ready?
Hi, Leslie. You first.
All right, all right. Come on. I mean, most of them. I'm gonna suspend the rules.
Okay, now?
I'm gonna suspend the rules for these and break...
All right.
George, I'm gonna suspend the rules.
Okay.
And move these two forward, and we're gonna start the public comment. Ready? All right.
We're too late.
All right, thank you, guys, all for helping us participate with the youth associations. We do have... We're gonna give you... Yeah, we're gonna give you guys a couple minutes so you can go ahead and exit the room. Mr. Abbas is here. He's just gonna address the council on the associations, what they've accomplished and what they've been doing. But this is not just athletics. Okay, guys? All right, please, we wanna be able to let everybody be able to hear the speakers, okay? If you're all set and you got your words and you'd like to exit the building, go ahead, and we'll make room for other people to sit down. Thank you, guys. Shabbas.
On behalf of Michigan FC, I would like to thank the councilmen and councilwomen for your support in the city of Dearborn. On behalf of Michigan FC, I would like to thank the councilmen and councilwomen. On behalf of the kids and the youth and their families, we've been working tirelessly for the last 10 years. And I'm quoting the numbers that we have. 4,903 players, 1,923 hours volunteered, seven robots built, and six engineers moving from our youth program that is... We started off as a soccer program, and as the kids become 17 years old or 16, they move into our robotics team, Michigan FC First Robotic Competition Team. And then eventually, we mentor them and coach them, and we have so far six engineers, two that work for Ford, two work for GM, Harman, Samsung, and Apple, one engineer. It is our duty to support the youth and the community that enable us to put a path for the future of our youth. The future is with the youth. Our kids are empowered through sports, and robotics is the path forward. They play two times a week, and two days a week they play games, but without the support of the Parks and Recreation, they wouldn't be able to do that. And the 4,893 kids are thanks to you, the members before you, Mike Shishannon, Parks and Recreation Director, John Golick, and Jason, the one after them, and the one after and after. It is with your support that we are able to support them. We ask you to extend our Michigan FC family with support of field availability, because we have too many kids, and our playing field, our game field, our training field is all the same. And these kids run quite the time, about five miles per practice. So we ask you, as our family, as our extended family, from the youth that you've seen before you, with your support, we can enable and empower more kids, more engineers, more robotics students, and a brighter future for our community as a whole. And I'm gonna give you just a little bit of statistics. 23 countries, 23 different countries, from Africa, Asia, Europe, South America, and that's why we call it Michigan, because it represents Michigan as a whole. Dearborn is part of Michigan, but it represents Michigan as a whole. And the women's program, the girls' program, is also picking up. We have three full-time coaches. We don't forget about the girls either. That is our bright side of our community and our future as Michigan FC. So on behalf of the families, we ask you for support in terms of extending our reach with the Parks and Recreation to enable these kids, these families, and the youth to have a brighter future.
Thank you very much, Abbas. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Kamal Swafi. On his behalf, he's come... He has come out, supported the robotics students and the training of the football program.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate that. So I know people are here, are waiting. Under the new council rules, we have a public comment in the beginning, which we'll be starting in just a minute. I'm asking for a motion to suspend the rules for two resolutions. Motion by Councilman El-Sawafi, supported by Councilman Hamud, and here any... No objections, unanimous roll shall be attached. So, Mr. Clerk, can we move forward, item 33, and then 34?
They're having problems hearing you, Council President. I don't know if it's up all the way.
It is up all the way. All I can ask, if you can, please, everyone, try to remind... Just please try to keep your comments down so we can... Everybody can hear each other, okay? Mr. Clerk?
Item number 33, resolution by Councilmember Hamud and Council President Serini, recognizing May 2 through May 6, 2024, as Teacher Appreciation Week and requesting immediate effect.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Clerk. This item was brought forward by Councilman Hamud, recognizing our teachers for Teacher Appreciation Week Resolution for 2024 by the 34th Dearborn City Council. Councilman Hamud?
Yeah, so I think we all know education and knowledge are the foundation of current and future strength of our country. And I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but I'll highlight, you know, during these extraordinarily challenging times, teachers and other education staff have stepped up in new ways and new roles to support their communities and their students. And the purpose of National Teacher Appreciation Week is to raise public awareness of the contributions that teachers have made to our community and to promote greater respect and understanding for teaching as a profession. So, resolve, the city of Dearborn thanks teachers of the United States and promotes the profession of teaching and contributions of educators during this time of crisis by encouraging students, parents, school administrators, and public officials to recognize this National Teacher Appreciation Week.
Thank you, Councilman Hamud. Any other questions or comments? Many of us have grown up with teachers that have affected our life, that we still remember the lessons. It's not just the books and the lessons. They have taught us many things that we made us the persons that we are today. So they are underpaid. I don't think underappreciated, because I know I still see my old council, my old teachers, and it does make a difference in who you are as a person, a human being. So thank you, Councilman Hamud, for bringing this forward. Unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item 34, resolution by Councilmember Hamud and Council President Serini, recognizing May 6 through May 12, 2024, as National Nurses Week and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, as we celebrate National Nurses Week, we take a moment to honor and appreciate the incredible dedication and compassion of our nurses across the nation. And Councilman Hamud, I'd like to turn this over to you for bringing it forward.
Well, I mean, I think many of us up here have loved ones, or a daughter, for example, who's in nursing. And, you know, I think we all see how hard it is on them day in and day out, and I think it's important that the city of Dearborn does recognize that, you know, all healthcare professionals are very important for establishing the infrastructure that we have to take care of everybody here. I think people need to understand that, you know, they also help inform and educate people and work closely with legislators as well to improve education, retention, recruitment, and the practice of medicine in our community. So the resolve clause here, you know... Well, actually, I'll read one more sentence in here, which is, "Nurses touch the lives of people in the United States through every stage of life, and has been voted the most honest and ethical profession in the United States." So resolve is that the city of Dearborn supports the goals and ideals of National Nurses Week as founded by the American Nurses Association, recognizes the significant contributions of nurses to the healthcare system in the United States, and encourages the people of the United States to observe National Nurses Week with appropriate recognition, ceremonies, activities, and programs to demonstrate the importance of nurses to the everyday lives of patients.
Thank you, Councilman Hamud. And yes, my daughter is a nurse practitioner, and nurses do a lot for our community, and they're the ones that do most of the work, so it was worth being recognized. Any other questions or comments? The unanimous roll shall be attached. We shall return now to the regular meeting, which I think a lot of people are waiting for. Mr. Clerk, can we have that?
Yes, item number seven is public comment, and we will begin at 7:24.
All right, so for everyone out here, we have comment cards. You do not have to fill one out, but there's rules and explains everything to you. All I ask is that you, in order for someone that is speaking, to give them the opportunity to speak, so be quiet, please, if you can, so you can hear them. And any speakers, I wanna make sure they remind you that you're addressing the council, not the city attorney, not turning around and/or to the crowd, okay? This is for the council meeting. So I'm gonna go through the cards, one by one. There is a 30-minute council under the new council, the 34th Council. This has been brought forward to the beginning meeting. In the past, these public comments were done at the end. This one is 30 minutes at the beginning, then we also have another public comment unlimited at the end. So just please be respectful to others and so that we can have them... It's not easy to come up here and speak, so when they come, I want them to be heard. Okay, so we're gonna go through the cards. The cards are on either side. You can turn it right there out. And they'll bring it up. If you don't wanna use a card, you can just raise your hand, and we have a 30-minute timeframe. We also have a three-minute limitation in which the clerk will give you a warning in 30 seconds when you're close to that, okay? So first, we have Todd Sheer... Shever? Yes. Thank you. And just kindly, if you can, sir, either podium is active, just state your name and address for the record.
Todd Shear, 22432 David Street, Taylor, Michigan.
Taylor, Michigan.
This pertains to Camp Dearborn.
Camp Dearborn. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. First off, thanks for hearing me. I appreciate it very much.
Of course.
Couple of problems that I ran into out there this year at camp were the changing of manipulation of dates and amounts on some documents that were already signed by the campground and myself and my wife. I was told that we had to pay by February 15. That was when they wanted your fees for this coming year to be paid. Otherwise, you were gonna be facing some pretty hefty late fees, the end of which would be total loss of your lease. We are paid through May 24th and May 26th. Why do I have to pay in February for the next year? You guys dropped this on us, or they dropped it on us, in December. When I went into the office for us to pay, I have copies of the documents here, I happened to notice we went online and got the previous lease, and we looked at the dates and went, wait a minute, what is that? February, and the original is May 26th to May 24th of 2024. It was changed from May 26th of 2023 to February 15th of 2024. Same confirmation numbers, same invoice numbers, and I was told by the office manager, right out, I did that. I went in there and changed that because I wanted people to be here by the 15th to pay. Well, the last I checked, when I went online and everything, if you alter a signed document, that is a fraud. And I'm sorry, I feel like that's what happened. She committed a fraud by doing that. You can't do that. You wouldn't let me do it. I don't expect that you're gonna be able to do it.
Okay, Todd, I appreciate that information. If you don't mind, I'd like to get a copy of those from our department, so our legal department can look into it. Our director is not available. I know that we have somebody from Recreation and then is Mr. Golich here as well?
Yes.
Who is... Yeah, hold on, we're gonna get to the bottom of it.
Council President, we have two members from the Parks and Recreation team.
I know, but neither of them are the director. But we're gonna have... I'd like the assistant director to come forward, and I know legal is gonna have to look into this. So, Todd, what we're gonna do is we're gonna take the information. I don't want you to think that we're shunning this, okay? I know, but I'm a lawyer as well.
The person I've dealt with at camp has been very, very receptive to what I had to say.
Right, I understand, but change in... I know, but the claims you're making, they have to be investigated. Okay, changing dates on signed documents is not something that... It doesn't have the authority, any of these gentlemen, none of them do. It's got to go with the legal department.
I understand it.
So I'd like to just to find out, Mr. Golich, are you aware of any of these documents that he has as far as signing? And if you just state your name for that.
Yeah, good evening, Council President, members of council, Jonathan Golich, Assistant Director, Parks and Rec. I am not familiar with any of this, but this is something I can definitely look into for tomorrow morning.
Yeah, we're gonna get a copy of it. So your concern was is that the date changed after you signed it to be paid accelerated. Is that correct?
Right, so I would have to pay it of February of this year, which really financially more...
I know, but May.
It was originally May before the change. We're paid through May 26th.
Okay.
And they made us pay again in February, which really kinda put a financial hardship on it, because they increased our fees again this year by $500.
Yeah, we did have it. We did have a meeting on that, sir, and we had many people, and the mayor is here. He was not here tonight, but he was here to speak regarding it and the amount of improvements. Camp Dearborn has not had an infusion of money in it for years.
Right.
And we've already allocated over $2 million in there right now to get Camp Dearborn to where it was, you know, where it should be, representing the city and our residents. So I can speak for the council, and I know that the administration and the mayor are fully committed to investment in the Camp Dearborn. You might be aware, a term ago or so, there was talk and meetings on selling a portion of Camp Dearborn, which did not go anywhere at that time. So the mayor and the administration and the council are committed to reinvestment and keeping Camp Dearborn going. But these things right here, we do need to find out what's going on. I know there is a packet of people here for Camp Dearborn. So I wanna try to give everybody that has an opportunity to speak in the timeframe. But we have... Todd, your phone number on this, and we will get back with you tomorrow and make a copy of it as well, so I do appreciate that. And you got his copies? Yeah, Jackie? Todd, if you don't mind, our executive assistant's gonna take those from you, make a copy and give them right back to you.
All right.
And then Jackie, just attach this.
Actually, they can have these copies. I made them for them.
Oh, even better.
I guess because I wanna let all my other family out there, I can't have a chance to speak, I'll just let it go with this.
I appreciate it. Yeah, yeah, I'm sure there's more. I appreciate that, Todd. So if you don't mind, we're gonna go in order, and we'll go from there. I'm gonna leave the director, Assistant Director Golich, up here. Okay, we do have several for camp, and I do appreciate there is a lady that's gonna speak on behalf of several people, so we'll have her come up just after these. We have Mr. Salamasi, Ali Salamasi. So, we'll have her come up just after these. We have Mr. Salamasi, Ali Salamasi. And just, Ali, just your name and address for the record.
Ali Salamasi, 22901 Wilson Avenue, Dearborn.
Go ahead, Mr. Salamasi.
I'd like to know how many people on this council have been to Camp Dearborn. Yeah, don't act like you haven't, because I know you have. Y'all have.
We all have.
Right? We grew up there.
Yeah.
Now it's being dismantled. Okay, I don't know why. My trailer does not have a canopy. My trailer does not have a shed. I received a telephone call that they will not be renewing my lease. Can somebody please explain to me, what is it about me that they won't be renewing my lease? I paid up. Anybody?
Mr. Salamasi, we're gonna have to look into that. So, let me get the.
That's fine.
What number is that? What number?
H-18.
H?
18.
18, okay.
Okay. There's a lot of people.
But I want you, if there's any, is there, I know, we're gonna get through all of them.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, we're, we're gonna have, make sure everybody has, but I want to address your issue. So, your lease, you were called, do you know by who?
Yes, by Scott.
Scott. And he said, and he told you that they're not renewing your lease?
Correct.
And, and was it?
I should sign over my title to the city. The $500 deposit that I had put in will be used towards destruction of my trailer.
Okay.
Okay. Now, the other questions I have is just, did they sell Camp Dearborn to somebody?
No.
So?
Yeah, Dearborn has to be sold by the, by the council and by the voters. So, there's no land being.
By the voters. So, last time I remembered, it was the residents of Dearborn that owned Camp Dearborn. Okay. Well, how come we didn't get the vote on this increase? How come we didn't get the vote on these changes that have been made to Camp Dearborn as far as it goes with awnings and four feet away and, you know, sheds and, and whatnot? How come? I'm just addressing the council.
Yeah, Mr. Salamasi, regarding, regarding the sheds and the four feet away, that was, I, I requested that data from the legal department. That's a, I think it's 92 or 93, as I said many times, state, state statute that we have been violated on as a county, as, as the city of, of, for having these attached. Now, I have been vocal regarding this and have said, there's some of these residents of Camp Dearborn that have had permits for these in the past because the city also allowed it to happen. You can't allow things to happen and then come back and change it. But you got to understand, we have a new administration, we're infusing millions of dollars in the Camp Dearborn. That's why the fee increases are happening. Bathrooms, ADA compliances, there's a lot. Wi-Fi, is the Wi-Fi up yet?
Um, yeah.
I don't.
Hold on, we don't want, I'm sorry, we, we don't allow people talking, we don't allow people talking from the audience, okay? You have to be addressed and recognized. So, I'd like, is the Wi-Fi working now in the camp? Has it started?
We have sections that are.
Just say your name.
Okay, my name is Steve Keiborg. I am a Dearborn resident, as well as a TV2 resident, and now an employee for the Parks and Rec Department. So, I'm here with John, my assistant director, to answer any questions you might have.
Right. So, the question was, how is the Wi-Fi? Has that been up and running? Because I, my understanding it was.
Okay, the Wi-Fi is up and running, but they're spotty because the hills and some of the receivers have not been installed, installed, installed completely. So, TV2, unfortunately, is not completely up and running. IT told us the May 6, that still hasn't happened, but we're working diligently with IT to get this answered.
Okay, I mean, we understand, we understand there's bugs, it's new, but there was no Wi-Fi at all before. So, we're, we're working towards it. My point of that, Ms. Salamasi, is let you know that the city, the administration, and the council is committed to reinvestment. As far as, we, we can't, you vote for us.
Right.
We can't take to the ballot. I'm not a big believer of going to the ballot for every time they ask people, should we raise, the fees were raised because we want to reinvest in Camp Dearborn and make it a lot better place for all of our residents. So, that's where we're at there. But I will look into your, your asking.
My final question.
Yes?
I have, is, are we a state park, or are we, or does it belong to Dearborn?
I think, Mr. Romer, can you answer that? I know it's a Dearborn park, but we have state regulations. But let, our attorney can answer that.
Yeah, so, you're not a state park, but you're regulated by the Campground Act, which is regulated by state law.
Okay, which is?
What is the state law?
I don't think anybody here, at least I don't know the state laws.
Yeah, the issue, I read it. I had it sent to me because we were having these questions. It's basically, it has to do with, you got to remember that the trailer, so everybody knows what's going on with the trailers, right? The trailers are supposed to be removable.
Correct.
We're supposed to be able to move them. We know, like you said, we grew up there, that 90% of them, the wheels have been taken off, they can't get moved, things have been altered to them. The state of Michigan has violated the city of Dearborn. I requested it and seen it. You can't have anything for a safety hazard within four feet around it. Now, as I told you in the beginning, the city in the past was complicit in this, allowed people to do these things.
Right.
We're trying to get it cleaned up. We spent well over a million dollars in electrical over there, I think, last year or year before.
Yeah, electrical.
So, we're getting that way, but we have to get in compliance. So, that's where we're at today. But I, I'm gonna look into why you're not renewed, or what was the issue that they, and they told you, just give up your trailer?
Yeah. I mean, like I said, I have no awning. I have no shed.
Yeah.
You know, I didn't even get a report on, you know, what was the reason, you know, like, like it need to be painted.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna get that about it.
Broken windows, anything.
No, I've been, I've been by yours. I don't see no broken windows.
Council President, if I may?
Yeah.
Yes, chief, because we want to get through the rest of them. Go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. What I would say is, I think that you're, you're absolutely on the right track. I think we'll take down the information. Our team will look into it. I'm very confident that the team has made several attempts to communicate. And if there has been a gap in communication, we'll definitely address it. You have our, our assistant director and our camp supervisor who will be able to kind of navigate that, that process with you. So, if you just make sure we get that information, your name and your phone number, and we'll follow back on it.
Mike, you have my name?
I have everything. I have everything. And we're, we're gonna, I promise you, we'll get an answer. Just give us a couple of days to find out what the status is.
I'll give more time to whoever needs to speak next. Thank you, Josh.
So, we have a few other residents, and then we have someone who is gracious enough to speak for several people. So, let me get through the first two, and then we'll get through. Keep in mind, folks, if, try to be specific on your issue so that we can get to the bottom of it. It's very important for us to find out what is happening. In order to know that, we have to hear from you. So, we have Tammy Atkins.
Hi.
Okay. Hi, just your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Tammy Atkins, 2068 York, Northville, Michigan.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Hi. I want to thank the council today for hearing all of us. I know that there's a lot to hear. So, I'll try to get to mine and wrap it up very quickly. I want to address the Americans with Disabilities Act. Camp Dearborn has failed, and they are breaking the law by not allowing people with disabilities to have the proper equipment that they need to get into their trailers. They are telling them that they cannot have bigger steps. When people have had disability, people have had many hip surgeries, they cannot get up into their trailer with those little bitty steps. They have been told to remove those steps, that they can't have those steps. Why can't they? In the ADA requirements, it indicates that people that have mobility, circulation, respiratory, neurological disabilities can use any type of devices that they need to get into their RV or to use a scooter, any type of scooter, a wheelchair, a cane, any, any type of those types of things to get around.
Right.
Camp Dearborn is saying that we cannot have scooters. They are saying we cannot have stairs to get, uh, disabled people to get into their trailers. They're telling them they have to take them down. They can't have them. Well, guess what's happening? I fell off mine. I fell off my steps because you would not allow us to have bigger steps to get into our trailers. That is against the ADA rules. Also against the ADA rules is service dogs. Now, I know there probably are a lot of people in that area that have dogs up there that aren't service dogs, okay? But a lot of us do have service dogs. They've been trained. They are state and federally regulated. That, too, is against the law with the ADA rules. You are allowed to have a service dog, no matter what. Another thing, yes, it's in the ADA laws if you'd like to read it. Another thing, through the ADA laws, with the service animal, and I, and I will state right here in the notes, that TV1 is allowed to have two pets per site on designated pet-only campsites in TV1. Then I'll come over here, pets are not allowed into TV2 between the dates of Memorial Weekend, starting May 26 through Labor Day Weekend of May 5 of 2023. Pets may not be left unattended in your RV or in your site.
You have 30 seconds.
They always were. Why not? Why is it changed now? If your dog is to be a constant barker, please leave them at home. Well, a service dog is a barker. All dogs bark, okay? That's just a rule.
Right.
But a service dog allo, alerts you to something wrong with you.
No, no, of course, Ms. Atkins, I, I think.
I'm sorry, you're kind of.
All our colleagues are aware of that. So, I don't want to take more of your time.
I just want.
So, would you, yeah, go ahead. You have something?
I just want to indicate one more thing.
Yeah, of course.
As far as service animals are go, you're only allowed to ask two questions. One, are you disabled? Two, why do you have a service dog? When I went into your office and I showed your employees that my dog has a registered tag from the state and the federal government, they were not supposed to take that tag from me or make a copy or put it into my file. They did. They broke the law. You broke the law. If you don't know about the ADA laws and you're not up to them, there's a problem here. There's a problem.
Okay. Ma'am, we're gonna, so, if you have, you have, those are your letters that were sent to you?
Um, they're, they're all in the rules of Camp Dearborn. I have the whole ADA.
No, we have that, okay. I know the ADA, but what I'm stating is, was that something recently sent to you that you read or no? That's our, our regular rulebook?
Yes, this is in.
So, you're saying there's a contradiction, but I, I mean, we're gonna have our lawyers look into it, but it, it doesn't designate service dogs. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Is there anywhere that says?
They're saying we can't have that. They, we can't have service dogs.
Well, they're saying you can't have, or it doesn't indicate service dogs are separately?
Council President?
Yes?
Just to reiterate the, the kind of the comment that you made in the beginning regarding timing, I think what would be really appropriate, I think we'll double down on the fact that the city will always, is always in compliance, and we will make sure that the, the ADA, ADA, I'm sorry, ADA accessibility law is in fact enforced correctly and accurately by our team. So, if you would just make sure we have the name and information, we'll follow back on.
So, we're gonna, we do, we have him, Ms. Atkins. So, I, I have the phone number. We'll have, we're gonna have to look into this to see what the status is. I just want to make sure that it's, it could be an oversight that we didn't indicate service dogs in the manual. So, our legal department will task them, and, and I will refer that from the council.
And one, one last thing, is like I said, I don't know who is in charge of what, where, when, or how, but how, I, I want the ADA rules to put the larger steps that we can have to get into our facilities so that we don't get hurt any more than we are.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next, we have Kaloon Alwaz.
Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Kaloon Alwaz, 7315 Fenton Street, Dearborn Heights. I'm on behalf
of Mr. Oscar, for trailer number M30, Angelo Oscar. We had a problem, communication, like she was saying, that every time, I'm sorry, right now, like, we're gonna communicate, send you guys. Now, they saying that back last year, when they sent, they said they sent Mr. Oscar to his email, the invoice for the rent. Mr. Oscar was right there, behind the wall.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I talked to him.
Yeah.
This is, so you're speaking for Mr. Oscar?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Oscar.
Yes.
Yeah, no, it's okay. Just stand up. You can come up here, and we'll find out what's going on. So, go ahead, sir.
Okay, so they said that they sent him an email, which is, did not happen, for the bill for the, for last year. So, when we went to try to pay it, I know we went, he went overseas, I went overseas. We came back in August trying to take care of it. They said, oh, it's too late right now. We have to demolish the trailer. Then we went back again in October, November. We tried to pay what we owe, and they keep saying, oh, we're gonna demolish it. Trailer is brand new on the inside. We have brand new flooring, brand new everything, windows. They still don't want to demolish it.
Well, very minor.
They said something?
I know, let, let him, he's more capable of speaking. Mr. Oscar, step up here.
Yeah.
Say your name and address for the record.
Angelo Oscar, 4497 Corti, Dearborn, Michigan, 48126.
All right, so, Mr. Oscar, you never, you were told that you were sent an email, you didn't pay on time, and because the lease agreement says that if you don't pay within a certain amount of time, you forfeited your property?
They usually send me bill in the mail. And I was overseas from April 19 to May 20. After I come back, I didn't call them. And they said, no, you have some violation. We have to tear your trailer down. Then I went up there, and they said, the lady, she's supposed to take care of it. She's not there in the office. Then I called and called and called back in August. They said, that's it. I mean, you did not fix your violation. We have to tear it down. And since then.
Did you receive a violation report?
No. No, I did not.
All right, so, Mr. Oscar, what we'll do is, we're, again, this is M30?
M30, correct.
M30, okay. So, just, I want to, I'm gonna have you give your phone number to our, to Jackie.
I, I'm, I'm. We spoke to Mr. Hamud, and he said, then he sent us to somebody else, I spoke on the phone. I don't know if.
Yeah, that's last year that happened. I'm willing to pay the tax. I'm willing to do the violation, willing to remove the awning, I mean, if they want me to. But I want to keep my trailer there.
Yeah, of course. No, I understand. Okay, so, Mr. Oscar, we're gonna find out. And Mr. Kaloon, thank you for being his.
No, because I went through a lot to try to keep it.
I appreciate it, yeah. We're gonna find out what, what, what the aspect is and what we can do.
And here's the problem. They, they say, we're gonna send you something. I mean, I know, like, when the city want to send you something, they make sure you will get the information.
Yeah, well, I mean, when you sign a lease, I mean, they, they have all the information there. So, they'll, they'll send it exactly where you, where you have all the contracts.
They, they sent us the bill before in the mail. So, when they have a problem, they wouldn't send the mail. They were just saying, we sent you an email.
Hmm, okay. All right, well, we'll, we'll, we will find out, Mr. Oscar.
And it's like, it seems like they just want everybody to get my phone number.
Okay, Jackie.
Right, right? Everybody is here. I still have my 307 over, yeah. I just don't want to take somebody else's. They, it seems like they want.
Do you have a trailer at Camp Dearborn?
Yeah, the same trailer.
Okay. If you'd like to wrap it up, because I, there's many people.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, just one second. Okay. It, it just seemed like they want you to, and they told me, whoever I spoke on the phone, they told me, move your trailer and bring another trailer back in, and you, you are, you can have the lot. But they just want you to have it a little smaller. I mean, I, we have a 46 footer. They just want to get rid of everything there. I guess, he, he just said it to me, crystal clear. They want to move.
Who'd you speak to?
I'll, I'll, I'll give him the name, because I have his phone number, too.
Okay.
What, did I spoke? I'm not sure. It was, did I spoke to M30?
No.
That's okay. I'm not sure. But he was the director. He's the, he's the boss.
That's fine. We're gonna get to the other people. I appreciate that. We're gonna find out. And Angelo, we'll find out. Don't worry. All right, no problem. All right, we have Teresa Parks, which is so willing to speak for a, a pack of these cards. Folks, we have a 30-minute timeline, but I'm trying to extend it because I do want to make sure, no, no, I understand. I'm speaking to everybody else. I want to make sure that everybody that came was able to be heard, so we can get to the bottom of it. So, Ms. Parks, you may begin.
Hi, I am representing TV2. I am a camper out there. I'm age 51.
Just your name and your name and address for the record.
Teresa Parks, 1817 North Melville. I do have petitions signed by quite a few of our residents out at Camp Dearborn, TV2. You guys keep mentioning the state, okay? But there is a legislation that SB 486, Camp Dearborn does not meet that bill. And we have it in print. So, we are disputing the, the rent increase was 117% increase within the past few years, which we're leasing our lots. So, it goes by leasing laws. Also, a lot of our people are getting emailed. Where's the mail? It's called a stamp and a letter. A lot of these people don't read emails. I'm just, the, the, the state is what's got me really boggled. You guys are sitting there saying that the state is involved, but then yet you guys have a bill that city of Dearborn is not meeting it. Does not meet the definition of that bill. And it is SB 486. The moving of our decks. I have a husband that's handicapped, and I'm also handicapped. If you're asking me to move my deck four feet away from my trailer. If you're asking me to move my deck four feet away from my trailer, what am I gonna do? Have a drawbridge to go to my trailer now? I do meet most of the requirements, I have my shed four feet away from my trailer. I do have a deck that is movable, it used to be a camper, that we made into a deck that lines up with my camper. I don't have overhangs, everything, but what you guys are doing is you're tearing a family apart. We are Camp Dearborn TV two family. We eat together, we have bonfires together. We have holidays together. Some of us don't celebrate Ramadan, but we'll still do it, because we're family. And what you guys are doing is tearing that family apart. It's no different than you tearing your own home apart.
You have thirty seconds?
I do have copies of this stuff if you would like it. I also have the petition, not quite everybody, but we also had a lot of people forfeit their trailers already, that need to have them titles re-hand it back to them.
Well, ma'am, I, as far as the titles, that's a legal issue, I mean, someone, you know, our city attorney, I spoke to him before, in the lease agreement, if somebody gave up the title-
You're forcing people to give up their titles.
Ma'am, we're, believe me, we're, the director's not here, and, uh, I'm gonna get a support from one of the council members to call a study session, we're gonna require uh, Scott and, uh, Jemmy and, and whoever else is at Camp Dearborn to come for a council uh, study session, and we will make sure that you get invited, because we're gonna get to the bottom of it, I mean, like I said, once you get to here, it seems like something has failed in the process, and we want to make sure, you know, we are the elected body, that we get to the bottom of it.
But if you guys are gonna put the emails out there saying that state in, uh, Oakland County is the one putting these requirements out there, show us the proof. Show us the state is telling us to take this stuff down. Tell, show us that Oakland County is telling us to take this down, and don't only email it, put it in the mail.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll make sure we contact you when we have the study session. Jack. Thank you for, uh, being the voice of the other people. We have three or four more cards we'd like to get through, and this one is also a trailer for Eva, Elena, Elena? Elana?
Elan.
Elan Swite? I'm sorry, it's hard to read the-
Sue.
Sue?
Sue.
Sue, okay. Sorry about that, it's hard to read the cursive writing, but I'll state your name and address for the record.
Elan Sue, two two four seven Hall Lane in Wicksum, Michigan.
Wicksum.
Um, Saturday I went up there to see how far up they wanted me to move my canopy. Uh, it's really big. I've been going to camp for sixty-three years, and I've been buying and selling and buying and selling, and I got the biggest one now. And, um, that porch, I fell in love with it, and I paid ten thousand dollars for this. And then, uh, then I'm told that no, you gotta take the whole awning off and probably your porch too, and then, uh, next year you probably got, get rid of your trailer. Uh, I don't, I just lost my husband, we, you live, I live on social security. I just put all this money in this trailer, I put a rubber roof on there, I painted it, it looks beautiful, I always decorate it very beautiful, putting flowers all over it. And now they're saying, you're gonna have to get rid of your trailer? They didn't give me heads up when I bought it. I needed heads up. If you, if you buy this trailer, you might not be able to sell it. I don't have ten thousand laying around all the time. That's a lot of money.
I thought that was grandfathered in.
And what is that? No more grandfathered in? I thought grandfathered in was a reason, it was something.
Listen, we want to make sure we hear the speaker, please, I don't want to have to have you guys removed, you have to write a card, sir, you can get a card and we'll-
I'm sorry, sir, how can you take away grandfathered in?
Right. Yeah, uh, we had that discussion, and we'll make sure we notified you because-
If you want me to leave, pay me off. Give me some money back. I can't lose ten thousand and some, the rubber roof wasn't expen- was expensive.
Okay.
Jeez.
The, who told you to, to give up the trailer? I mean, did they, is there, you can't move the, the porch off, or is it, what's the-
It's huge. How big is it?
Folks, we have to have order, please, I don't want to have to have people removed. If you can't, if I can't hear the person, we cannot have yelling from the, from the, uh, maga-
He is mental, too.
We understand the passion, we understand that, how much this means to you, that's why I've extended the time, that's why I've given the liberties that we have, but please, just respect everybody in the, and here, so we can hear what's going on. Okay, ma'am, do, has anybody told you that you had to give up the trailer?
He says probably next year, we're gonna have to get rid of it.
Who's he?
Scott.
Scott. Okay. Ma'am, thank you, we have your number here, and we will contact you, because we're gonna have a study session requiring them to come-
Will you buy me off? I mean, I, I don't want to be there anymore, it looks like a war zone, it's terrible.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. All right, next we have Krista Lefa- LeFib. Another one?
Hi, um, Krista-
Just your name and address for the record.
Osada LeFever, twenty-two one thirty Morley Ave. Um, I think the big issue here is people feel they're being deceived in many ways as far as Camp Dearborn is concerned. What the plan is, what the, for the last few years, the area has just deteriorated and deteriorated, and people are being bullied. And I don't care what anybody says, they're going into the office, tell, they're be, they're being told, basically, if they don't move their trailer out this year, they don't pay anything this year, but next year, it'll be five thousand dollars to move your trailer out. So in a sense, that's hanging carrot over someone's head, like, okay, next year I might have to move this, and it's gonna cost me five grand to do so. Um, we want to know what's going on. Like, are you selling the area, are you not selling the area? I realize it has to go to a city vote, but the way it looks, we have never, ever been asked where this money, okay, the zip line, waste of money. Internet, I don't go to Camp Dearborn for internet. I go to Camp Dearborn to enjoy time with my family and my friends. That money's spent without asking anybody, okay? All these grants are implemented, and we have no say in them.
Well, ma'am, yeah, we have, no, hang on, you, you made a statement that's really far out there, so first of all, I want to make sure we understand. We, we're trying to do the best we can on this administration. There has been, let me just say this again, zero reinvestment over the last two administrations in, in there, besides the zip line. That's it, zero. So we're trying to put more money in. The mayor went out and got a two million dollar grant that we're putting in there for improvement.
Which we appreciate.
I understand, but I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have the director, assistant director, explain how we do with our, uh, how we end up talking and having groups in order on what we wanted to do with Camp Dearborn. It wasn't just unilaterally, we decided to do it. Can you speak to that?
Absolutely, again, Jonathan, of course, the director, so obviously, I'm sure you guys saw, we had the study session, we have a Camp Dearborn master plan, that's a big thing we're working on right now.
What is it? Big up, please.
Sure.
And Steve can speak to it as well, go ahead.
Um, I've been involved in the, with the consultants, um, again, I was part of the Parks and Rec Commission, as well as the Camp Dearborn Advisory, so there's a advisory board that has been put together just recently. Um, the consultants are gonna be unveiling the master plan come June. In part, what I've done is I've been taking sneak peeks of that to implement things this year for people. You know, we have done, we're added a butterfly garden, we've added numerous trails this year, um, we've, I've done added research with the help of this, uh, council in this administration. We've changed our descriptions of our job folks, I've recruited more so that we have staff, because being a, a resident out there for nine years and growing up out, out of Camp Dearborn since nineteen seventy-five, I love Camp Dearborn. I left my career to, to help Camp Dearborn become a better place to, to move it forward.
So we just don't love TV two.
This administration, excuse me.
So we just don't love TV two.
I, I love TV two, I'm in TV two.
Everything is coming out.
We, um, what we did this year for TV two is we, we redid three of the roads, and every year we're going to in- increase and improve the roads in TV two. We're also, with the consultants redesigning every year the bathrooms, that we're investing in redoing the bathroom, because I think everybody here can say the bathrooms need, the bathrooms definitely need some work, uh, because the infrastructure is really old. So we, there are plans and we are working on that. We're just waiting for the consultants to come back to be able to release it to the public, but I have seen them, they're exciting, it's, it is a very exciting time to be part of Camps moving forward.
Thank you, thank you. So, and, and you've seen the tents, some things might not be what you want, there is reinvestment, and we're trying to make it better, so I can assure you, because I was here and I chaired the meeting when the previous administration was, had an, an offer to sell with no appraisal for a TV two. I don't know if you remember.
Well, I was here in that meeting and I asked, I asked about, like, they were talking about moving people up, and then running electric and this, that, and the other, and I was the person that asked, like, what's the cost for this? What is the, what do you have telling us what this is gonna cost? Nobody could answer that question, okay? So I think that's one of the reasons why it was tabled. However, there's issues-
Well, it was tabled because there was no support for a sale without, without a valuable plan.
Right. There was no plan, that's what I'm saying.
Exactly.
Um, people are weary of investing more money in their trailer
Yeah.
because we don't know what's going on, and it has been in the last six, seven years, just getting worse and worse and worse, as if they don't care about that area, they don't care about the people that have, that care about their place there, that actually take care of their place. They have, like I said, they've offered people, you know, give up your trailer this year, it's gonna cost you five grand next year. Okay, I've heard this from multiple people. This is not just will we know it. We've never seen documentation from the state as far as what their regulations are. We had our lines cut for the electrical, okay, which was fine, I hired a licensed electrician to come out to my trailer, re-hook my trailer up, paid four hundred dollars, and my electric's flagged by someone who's not an electrician, Scott Shear. That's the problem.
Okay. I appreciate, I can tell you, ma'am, when, when we have the meeting-
I'm just, I'm just saying, there's a lot going on that's, you guys don't know about.
I agree, I mean, it's, look, if you're getting the same complaints over and over again, there's, there's a concern. I don't think anybody of my colleagues would disagree, so we're gonna have to bring the people from Camp Dearborn in to have a meeting, and, and I'm gonna order it right after this, so that we-
Yeah.
Okay, and we're gonna notify the residents to come in at that time, and we'll go from there, so I'll make sure that you're notified, I promise you. We're gonna get to the bottom of it, because we have to get, you know, we have to have a set process, and there can't be, um, any issues where people said, he said this is wrong, you know, I, I went through that and made sure that everything was in writing, talked to the legal department, everything should be communicated in writing, so there's no, uh, left to chance, okay, so I don't think there's gonna be concern on that, okay, but we-
My, my other thing that I have to, to bring up is the, okay, the taking out all the green tents, okay? They just, the year prior, replaced all the tarps for those tents. Now, number one, those tents were a big draw for people, for families, for high school, you know, kind of, they would have reunions and run a whole row.
We're, we're, we're well aware of it, but we, the council had a different opinion on the tents because they, they were very, very old, there was breakage on them, there was people being-
Because they weren't maintained.
I understand, ma'am. I'm trying to fix problems. I know, okay, I wasn't elected to go ahead and blame and point fingers, I'm trying to fix things.
Right.
So the point is, we made a decision as a body to go forward on the tent aspect, and we're putting money in there, we're putting money in electricity, we're doing things, I promise you, we're fixing the pool. There's a lot going on, the canteen is a disaster.
Yep.
Okay, it's very easy to sit up here and balance a budget by not doing anything, right? We're not doing that.
Right.
This administration, this council's not doing it, so all I can ask for you is, there's a lot of questions, let's get some answers, okay? And please, John, get her information, let her, let her be notified so she can be part of the process up there.
On our, on our level, you just have to understand that we're really frustrated.
Ma'am, I've been doing this, I know, I understand, I have to cut you short, but let me tell you something. The fact that you came here tells me all I need to know. It is, it's every, it's very serious, I don't, I mean, people might think we do this for a lot of reasons, I don't, my mom served for twenty-four years.
Oh, no.
Okay? Believe me, I, I leave, thank you, I leave my kids and my family to come here and do my service, just like all my colleagues.
Right.
We're not, we are here to hear you, we believe in it, and the, I have always said to my colleagues, when you get a room full of people, that's a problem, that means you, we have failed you somewhere. So, believe me, I'm gonna get to the answer of this, and you can ask about me. It's gonna be down, and it's gonna be written, and we're gonna make an ordinance so that there's no, there's no discussion, and I'll make sure you get everything you need.
Right, can I make one more point?
Yes, please.
Okay, so when they tried to, like, give us a reason of why the price increased, they compared us to other campgrounds.
Yes.
Greenwood Acres being one. Greenwood Acres has water hookup, uh, electric hookup, way more than we have. They have concerts, they have fireworks, they have activities, way more than Camp Dearborn. You can't compare apples to oranges, because we aren't getting what Greenwood Acres has. That campground is beautiful.
Okay, well-
Camp Dearborn TV two?
I'm glad, I'm glad you're still in Camp Dearborn, not in Greenwood, so I'm gonna tell you, I think our fireworks are fabulous, whether you like the wifi or not, I think it's great, and we're working towards the bathrooms and ADA compliance, there's a lot of issues there, ma'am, and we have to take them one step at a time.
Right.
So, I promise you to be, to be involved. No, but it's a good point, I mean, we're gonna raise the fees before the services, what comes first, we need to raise the money to make sure we do it, but you got our commitment that we're gonna, we are looking into, so I'll make sure she gets a hold of you, okay?
Thank you.
We got three more cards and then one more person, sir. Yes, sir, we cannot take, sir. We can, sir. You cannot, yes, you had your time to speak, we have a council meeting, I'm gonna get through these three cards, because the people have been waiting, and one gentleman who raised his hand, and that's it, folks. Now, if you'd like to remain for the council meeting, we will pick up the public comment, and you can remain for that time. I tried to exhaust all methods. Mr. Clark, what time are, uh, have we exhausted?
You're over by about fifteen minutes already.
Okay, so I'm gonna go through these three cards, and the one gentleman who raises his hand, and, uh, anyone who did not speak or wanted to not stay for the final public comment at the end, please fill out your information, and I will make sure that our, our assistant will notify you, uh, of the council meeting. Okay, we have-
Counsel President, can I just have a motion to suspend if you're gonna exceed the thirty?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, a motion to suspend was offered by Councilman Hamud and supported by Councilman Alsoafi. Any objections to unanimous rule? Okay, unanimous rule should be attached. The rules are suspended, I'm gonna complete these three cards. We have Philip. I can't pronounce it. Dion?
No, that would be my boy, and you were, she's going about speaking.
Well, it says Philip, is that you?
No, his was not speaking.
Not speaking, about Stacy? Oh, that's both of you, okay. I apologize, so so Stacy, you're speaking for, for Philip. And yourself, okay. Yeah, I apologize, I just ran through it, thank you. Just your name and address for the record.
Stacy DeNoyer, two nine oh three Cornell, Dearborn, Michigan. Regarding B six. Um, my inspection report I was given by camp this year clearly says cabanas attached to trailers will be allowed until transfer ownership.
Okay, that was in your inspection report?
Yes.
And where is your location, where are you at?
B six.
Be like boy six?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then, of course, we received the email saying all cabanas have to be removed because state came in and did inspections. When I asked for a copy of the inspections, they said, well, they're not coming in till May.
Okay.
So I'm not sure what's going on with that one. Biggest problem I think we're all having is the miscommunication being, some people are being told decks are not allowed, period. Other people are being told they can have their decks. Some people are being told they have to move their decks, some don't. It's just causing a lot of problems that we're given wrong information, one hundred percent. I'm being forced out of my lot by May fourteenth, telling me my daily passes won't even be no good, my car passes, when I'm paid through the twenty-fourth, so how are you changing my lease and forcing me out?
And did, was that something you received in writing or no?
Yes.
Do you have a copy of that?
Yes.
All right, we're gonna ask that our executive assistant gets a copy of that.
And that's what everyone's being told, I have to make a decision by May fourteen to turn my title over or pay six to eight thousand dollars next year to have it removed.
Okay, and that was-
Again, they're scaring people, forcing them to skip, turn the things over right now, because they're giving me two weeks to make a decision, or it's gonna cost me thousands of dollars.
Okay, and was that in writing as well, or is that just the verbal?
That one was ver-
Okay, but you have the dates of, so we're gonna do Jemmy, if you want to get it.
I understand, Steve has this master plan that's gonna be-
The city has a master plan.
Yeah, but why are we hiding that till June while we're forcing everybody out to make a decision right now?
No, it's an overall plan, do you want to speak to it briefly?
Very briefly, it's still being worked out, we're trying to internally take a peek at it and make sure it's ready for everyone to see, we want to make sure this is perfect. This is a large investment that Camp Dearborn has never seen before, and this is something when we present to you, we want to make sure it's complete.
And speaking of investments, these people like myself, if I turn over my title right now, I'll get my money back. My trailer's not gonna be touched for the year, so Camp's losing my revenue, along with two other, two hundred other trailers, which is four hundred thousand dollars. Just to have empty trailers sitting there that aren't being taken care of at all. Camp doesn't take care of the property for the empty lots, it's a mess out there. So why would we force people out early and lose all that money and have untaken care of property? And I'm, have a whole lot of other lists, and I put it together in a letter that's being given to you guys.
Okay.
Those are my implications.
No, but thank you for coming up, I appreciate it.
I just want to know why I'm being told lies, and it's very, very frustrating.
There, there's definitely been some discrepancies, and we're, we're gonna find out why, because it should be very, when your lease ends and- When your lease ends and when things are due are very, very basic and, and elementary, they have to be laid out for the, uh, the person to understand. But there shouldn't be this, so we're gonna find out why.
And they're going as far as telling people they can't remove their blocks and flowers if it's not done by May fourteen.
Okay.
So everyone's out at camp right now in a panicked mess.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much. Jackie's gonna come to you, I know you're on a little screwed, she's gonna take your, uh, list, if you have that, that letter that you have. All right, we have one other person, then we have one gentleman who raises hands. We have Mr. Mo Muzaham, Muzalam? Muzlum, sorry. Just your name and address for the record.
My name is Mo Muzlum. My address is seven nine three zero Oakman Boulevard. Uh, I wanna thank the council and everybody here for you guys' support. I, I was born and raised in Dearborn. I remember Dearborn, we had pools, we had Gemini, we were supported in every way. It's a great place to raise a family, have your kids. Camp Dearborn was the gentleman pride of Dearborn. You guys are the caretakers of that. We trust in you to caretake for us. So one day when I get married and have my kids, I think of raising them here in Dearborn. Uh, we, we've had trailers for over fifteen years at Camp Dearborn. We've slowly saw how they block us. I, I, there's a trailer right next door to my trailer, it's beautiful on the inside. But the guy that goes there, his wife doesn't like it, he can't sell it. Because they put a block on transferring a title. Does that make any sense? There's, you, I, I can't sell my trailer, I can't have my buddy and all their families and kids come up and buy trailers because there's a block on them, basically they're kicking them out slowly. You guys are squeezing the life out of Camp Dearborn. You plan to invest money, it has to make money. And you're be, your competition is if I have to spend forty thousand to throw out my trailer and go buy a decent camper, forget I'm gonna go buy some land up north and I don't need to come to Camp Dearborn. But I like the fact that it's a half hour away, that I can, even if I'm working, I can meet my wife and kids, for example, even in the evening and come back the next day. That's the beauty of Camp Dearborn. I think the war on the trailers needs to stop. I think the war on the decks needs to stop. I think that you guys need to really sit back and evaluate what you're doing. If we wanted campers, we would go to a campground. We want trailers and we want Camp Dearborn to stay the way it's been since nineteen fifty. And, and we, we, we expect your support. And, and my father, he's a senior citizen. He has to pray, he has to wa, do his, his, his wash. He went and he made sure he's got running water, he bought that trailer because it's got running water. Now they told him, we're gonna have running water in the trailer. What, what is a senior citizen again supposed to go do? Run to the, he can't do that. So you're basically telling him, don't come here. These people are spending money, upgrading, making it beautiful. And, and every law that's been enacted for the last seven, eight years has been to stifle and kill the trailers and say, oh, there's nobody there, look, they don't want it, they gave it away. You know why they gave it away? Cause they can't sell it. Because they won't let us add somebody else on the title.
You have thirty seconds.
Can't do a transfer. I'm just saying, there's a lot of rules that are in place that have been killing that place. I stay, please, do not kill the trailers. We want trailers there. I want my deck, I want my roof, I like to play cards with my friends and barbecue. And if it rains, and you guys know how Michigan summers are, it's hard enough to get a weekend where we know it's gonna be sunny. So if it rains, we hide under our decks and we all hang out together. Don't, these rules need to stop. And we expect you guys to support us, you guys are our caretakers. That's all I wanted to say.
And give us some Muzlum.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, we have one gentleman, sir, that was waiting patiently, left, and that's all the cards. And then, um, sir, just before you begin, anyone else that has to speak regarding Camp Dearborn? If you felt that something's not said, please see Jackie, or you're free to stay to the end of the council meeting to then participate in that public comment. So thank you for being-
Forty-seven twenty-eight Argyle, Dearborn, Michigan.
Okay.
You just stated there's a master plan for Camp Dearborn. When is this master plan coming out?
Looking at the end of June.
End of June. Then why are you pushing all these changes right now? Why not get your plan together, show the people of Camp Dearborn what that plan is, and then implement any changes you may need to make? I already canceled my lease, I did not turn in my title yet because I wanted to come to this meeting because I find it ridiculous that this is even happening with no master plan. I find it ridiculous, like Stacy said, that you want us to hand over titles for trailers that aren't even gonna be demoed to the fall. The revenue alone has been lost at Camp Dearborn, and that's the big thing, money. It's crazy. So I would really suggest to this council that you put this on the back burner, figure out what you're doing, and then let us all make a decision. Everyone who canceled their sites, give them back. Everyone who turned in them titles, give them back. You guys can figure out what's really going on.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If you don't mind, do you mind if she gets your information so we can alert you to the meeting when we do have it, sir? All right, thank you very much. Again, this time, I apologize, but we must, uh, go on to our, you guys are all set from there. We're gonna, we'll get together and we're gonna, yeah, I know you're gonna be there, but we're gonna need, I'm gonna need you to send me the names of Scott, the full name, so we have them ordered to come for a meeting, okay?
Yeah, we'll get it, we'll get the whole team together.
Thank you. All right, so at this time, we have completed our public comment. And remember, there's another public comment at the end. If you are gonna exit, please try to do it respectfully as we continue to on to our meeting. Mr. Clerk, um, before we go on further to the consent agenda, if there's any items that any member wishes to remove-
Thank you for coming.
From the consent agenda and discuss individually.
Okay. Excuse us real quick. There's people that are terminating titles, do they have to terminate them on Friday? On Tuesday.
Ma'am, the coun, the council can't make that decision, it's not before us right now. So, you, you have to do, we are, we're gonna call-
I have done my Tuesday.
Okay.
Council President, if I may, yeah.
Yeah, hang on, we're gonna get, okay.
What I will say-
Chief, wanna answer that?
Yeah, Council President, if I may, please.
Yes.
What I would say is you have members of our team that are here today. If you have questions, concerns, or pending questions that are time sensitive, please provide your information to them and they will follow up with you before the deadline.
Ma'am.
The titles that you posted, one title, one title, the title that got handed over to them, there was a trailer, just a regular trailer, nothing, nothing had to be taken down. They, they, they passed on it.
Okay, we're gonna get, we're gonna get to the bottom, ma'am, I told you.
They gave that trailer to their employees.
All right, do you have the address of that trailer? Which the trailer number is that?
Oh, great.
Okay. Ma'am, we have to continue, give her, ma'am, give, give that information to Jackie and, and I, I guarantee you-
Thank you.
I will, I will get to the bottom of it. The titles follows, it's a signature, and we'll get to the bottom of that. Okay, thank you. We have to continue the meeting now, okay, folks? All right, thank you. Yeah, ma'am, ma'am, we can't have it like this. Yeah, we can't, I'm sorry. You have, you have to go ahead and give the information to, okay. Everyone, we're returning to the regular meeting, ma'am, the time has passed, I apologize. Yeah, you can, yeah, I apologize. You have to give the information to our executive assistant, they'll take the address, okay?
Okay.
All right, so I would like to return, before we move to the consent agenda, are there any items that any member would wish to remove from the consent agenda and discuss individually? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Mr. Clerk, you can proceed.
Uh, item number eight, resolution in need of offering support-
Offered by councilmen-
Approving all the items of the consent agenda and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, offered by Councilman Hamud and supported by Councilman Enos. Can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Enos.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Paris.
Yes.
Councilmember Alsoafi.
Yes.
I know, sir, sir, this is not the, hold on. Sir, this meeting, I, you cannot ask that city attorney, please, you have to, this is a meeting for the council, sir. You had your time to speak, we have to continue the meeting.
Thank you, very much.
All right, you're welcome. Mr. Clerk, can we continue now?
Council President Serini.
Yes.
It's unanimous, the resolution passes.
Okay, next item. Please, uh, anybody like to speak, can you guys go out to the hallway? Chief, can we, can we get, we have to run a meeting here. Yeah. Where's your two guys that were here? He had a roll call, ma'am. All right. Jackie, take them out in the hallway. Okay, Mr. Clerk, next item.
Item number twenty-two, resolution by Councilmembers Herrick and Alsoafi approving the minutes of the previous regular meeting of April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to these minutes? Okay, hearing and seeing none, the unanimous rule shall be attached, next item.
Item twenty-three, ordinance number two four dash one eight one seven introduced by Councilmember Hamud, synopsis and ordinance to amend the offenses chapter. Chapter fourteen of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Article Five, Section fourteen dash one thirty-one, entitled Breach of Peace, resolution by Councilmembers Paris and Alsoafi to table the ordinance.
All right, and this request is from the legal department requesting the amendment of existing breach of peace ordinance to clarify the penalty of violation of the ordinance, section fourteen dash one thirty-one. Does not currently specify the penalty for a violation in an absence of express language under the Code of Ordinances one dash nine. A violation of code of misdemeanor is punishable as a ninety-three day misdemeanor and with a fine up to five hundred dollars. The proposed amendment seeks to reduce this penalty from ninety-three days to ninety days, which will align with the low lever, level nature of this offense and be in compliance with state law as well.
This is the first of two readings, any questions or comments on this item? Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we have the first reading?
This is the first reading of ordinance number two four dash eighteen seventeen, in ordinance to amend the offenses chapter, chapter fourteen of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Article Five, Section fourteen dash one thirty-one, entitled Breach of Peace.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Any questions or comments from my colleagues or anyone from the audience? All right, unanimous rule shall be attached, next item.
Item number twenty-four, ordinance number two four dash eighteen eighteen introduced by Councilmembers, Councilmember Paris, synopsis and ordinance to amend the traffic and motor vehicle chapter, chapter eighteen of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Article Two, Division Six, Section eighteen dash two seven one, entitled Operating Motor Vehicle While Under the Influence of Intoxicating Liquor or Controlled Substance, Operating Motor Vehicle When Visibly Impaired, Operation of Motor Vehicle by Person Less Than Twenty-One Years of Age, Sanctions Cost Enhanced Sentence, Guilty Plea or No Contendre, Establishment of Prior Conviction, Special Verdict, Public Record, Burden of Proving Religious Services or Ceremony. Resolution by Councilmembers Alsoafi and Enos to table the ordinance.
No contendre.
No contendre.
Yeah, you got, it's good enough. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. This is another request by our legal department to amend the city's existing ordinance of old, of operating while intoxicated, O W I ordinance to remove a sunset provision for regarding blood, blood alcohol content or BAC for O W I offenses aligned with recent changes in state law. The state of Michigan receives annual federal funding, construction funding, condition on compliance with the national blood alcohol limit of point zero eight per one hundred meter, uh, milliliters of blood. This is the first of two readings, any questions or comments? All right, Mr. Clerk, can we have the first reading of this ordinance?
This is the first reading of ordinance number twenty-four dash eighteen eighteen, in ordinance to amend the traffic and motor vehicles chapter, chapter eighteen of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Article Two, Division Six, Section eighteen dash two seven one, entitled Operating Motor Vehicle While Under Influence of Intoxicating Liquor or Controlled Substance, Operating Motor Vehicle When Visibly Impaired, Operation of Motor Vehicle by Person Less Than Twenty-One Years of Age, Sanctions Cost Enhanced Sentence, Guilty Plea of No Contadre, Establishment of Prior Conviction, Special Verdict, Public Record, Burden of Proving Religious Service or Ceremony. Almost got it.
You almost got it, I mean, you got nadator, what's a nadatorium? That one's harder than that. I call it a pool, so it's, good job, George. All right, anyone here to speak on this item? All right. If not, unanimous rule shall be attached, next item.
Item twenty-five, resolution by Councilmembers Herrick and Enos authorizing the use of closure of parking lot B at two two one five five Garrison Street and the adjacent curved road from Garrison Street to Buddy's Pizza Parking Lot and the West Dearborn Downtown Development Authority from seven AM until ten PM for the twenty twenty-four Dearborn Summer Market, taking place on select Fridays from June fourteenth, twenty twenty-four through September thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, also waiving the noise ordinance during the same summer market event dates.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Dearborn Summer Market is back. Uh, it's been taking place in the West Dearborn Downtown Authority for the last six years. The event continues to bring visitors and residents to our community, strengthen the local support of our farmers. We have a nice illustration over there of where this is taking place, behind the Buddies and our public library. We will have, um, promote healthy living, shopping locally, and providing quality and fresh wholesome food as well as artisan, quality artisans. The market brings together diverse groups of vendors that will sell fresh flowers and produce artisan baked goods, soaps, woodworking, pottery, jewelry, and others. We have somebody here from our economic department, cause I was asking about if there was peanut butter, you were looking into that? So we're gonna get to that. Honey, I know there's honey. All these dates will be on Fridays, they will start at seven AM to ten PM. Uh, the dates are June fourteenth, July twelfth, July twenty-sixth is reserved for our rain day, August ninth, August thirteenth, and September, I'm sorry, August ninth and September thirteenth, September twentieth for a rain day. It's also requested that the city council waive the noise ordinance during the same summer market as we have bans out there as well. And immediate practice being requested. And we have somebody from Economic Development, if you just say your name here or your title.
Hello, Laura Sanchez, Economic Development.
All right, so what do you have to offer us on this, for this event?
Absolutely, so we are excited to host the summer market yet again. It is a yearly tradition in Dearborn and many vendors are excited to participate this year. We have over doubled our vendors who have applied to be a part of the summer market. Uh, we are going to be relocating this year. So previously we have been established on West Village Drive. Now we are going to be back at Bryant Branch Library where the summer market has been hosted for various years. So we will be there a few select Fridays during the summer months. We are going to be having some themed kid days, two Fridays of those months, and then we will have music the other Fridays of the, of the summer market. So we are excited to bring artisans, vendors, food trucks, and really celebrate entrepreneurship and our downtown community.
Excellent, there were some questions on our committee of the whole and you answered them very eloquently.
Thank you.
So I'd just like to give you a chance to bring it back up again regarding the food trucks, as you know, the council is very big and supportive of not hurting our brick and mortar businesses. So can you just speak to that, cause I think you had a solution for that, right?
Absolutely, so we do have food trucks participate in the event, but we have added a clause where we will not have any food trucks that are directly competing with any of the local businesses in the surrounding areas participate, just to make sure that we have varied food options and are ensuring no competition.
And this year, Laura, if you can, from what I understand too, for residents to know, there has been much more activity?
Mm-hmm.
And we have several new vendors, can you speak to that as far as volume?
Absolutely, so last year we had about eighteen vendors participate on a regular continuous basis, and this year we have over fifty apply to participate on the continuous basis. So we are very excited that more vendors are participating in our summer market. We think it's great for the entrepreneurship of the city. We know City, Dearborn is a city of entrepreneurs, so we're excited to keep celebrating that.
I, I really appreciate it. I, I live right down there, so I always stop by on Fridays and, and see it. It's, it's wonderful. Uh, you know, we always talk about the hometown of Henry Ford and, uh, but the small businesses are a lifeline. And this is a great opportunity for people to test their product, right?
Absolutely.
And, and, and get their product to market and, and get a test, can I really sell this?
Yeah.
And, you know, there's a lot of good things there, a lot of good woodworking that I remember too. So I can't wait to see it. I'm glad that it moved back to this location, and we wish you the most success.
Thank you. We're excited to see council there and the community.
Absolutely. Councilman Elsoafi?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you for coming in, Sanchez. I enjoyed the event very much last year. Caught the tail end of it. It was well done. So I'm looking forward to seeing it this year. I did have some questions. I know we talked about this during the cow, but I just want to talk about it again and touch base on it. We are closing the curved road and the parking lot, B, correct?
That is correct, yes.
So, I mean, cars are parking there right now. How do you plan on mitigating the flow of traffic? How are we not going to impede? How are we going to have accessibility to local businesses?
Absolutely. So we are starting the road off safely with indications from DPD and DPW with barricades, and we have been in consultation with our businesses to make sure that we're not impeding any of their deliveries that are being delivered to the adjacent businesses. So we are working very closely with the businesses to make sure that their customers are not affected. The biggest restaurant right next door is Buddy's, and their parking lot is not going to be closed. So we do not think that it's going to affect much of the traffic in that nearby vicinity.
And I have the same concern, Council President touched on it, as far as diversity of the vendors and making sure they're not hurting our local businesses. So I heard your answer, and I appreciate that. My last comment is, it's a great event. We want to make sure residents know about it. What is your promotion outreach plan? Can you talk about that a little bit?
Yes, of course. So we have really fleshed out our outreach in the last year or so. We have partnered with a lot of local social media influencers who are posting about this event, not only on social media, but within neighborhood associations and within the business community as well. Our board members, part of the West Downtown Development Authority, are also very active and help us promote either through flyers or dissemination to their network. So we, of course, also rely on council and our neighborhood liaisons to promote this event. And honestly, word of mouth and people just stopping by, if they're going out to dinner at a local restaurant, they might as well just pop by to the market. We're going to be there from four to eight PM, so essentially, it's the perfect time.
Awesome. I'll be sure to be there and then post on social media, so I'll help out a little bit.
Thank you.
All right, Councilman Hamud.
Yeah, so I think I want to commend you guys on excellent use of a parking lot. I think this is much better for a business than cars. I think another key point that we kind of touched on in the cow that I want to say out loud is, you know, the businesses' support in the area bringing foot traffic, and they already feel that they have enough parking. So we shouldn't hesitate when it comes to using pavement in our downtown. It's some of the most valuable real estate in the whole city. So I really commend you guys for that creative use. I think the other thing that I appreciated was that you guys are going to be utilizing the new landscaping that we're green lighting for the library right there. I appreciate that the library came to the table with us and is going to be collaborating with the ECD Department with programming and, you know, trying to integrate better into the, you know, the holistic events that we're trying to have here. And I think, you know, that, again, goes to kind of the good work you guys are starting to do in ECD. You know, I got to be honest, this is good stuff. And I know I'm hard on you guys, but I also appreciate you guys do good stuff. And then also, I think what was very important to me, which is something that we've discussed prior festivals, was kind of like the safety aspect and kind of the car through fare aspect, you know? When this was on Village, I used to go down there and see, you know, sometimes cars would ignore the barricades or motorcycles and things like that. I think the new setup you guys have hopefully will enhance the safety and security of pedestrians walking in the area. So, you know, I go down there almost every week. I live around the block. So I really look forward to seeing how this format works, and, you know, we're going to keep trying new things, and I really appreciate the work that you guys are putting in, so.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. Councilwoman Herrick.
Thank you. Thank you for the thorough explanation, Laura. You do a really good job representing your department and the programs that you're doing there. I just wanted to be clear, when we're talking about closing the Circle Drive, that's almost like the alley that connects behind the buildings there when you're talking about deliveries.
Correct.
And it allows people to get to the Buddy's parking lot usually, and the part that they need to get to Buddy's will still be open.
Yes.
And morally, I'm sorry, Garrison, the main street right behind there will be open
Yes.
during this event, so traffic that's getting through West Dearborn Downtown that way can still do that. So I just want to be clear in case anybody wasn't sure what road we were talking about being closed. I was just curious, and it is, it's on the map up here, but for people who aren't quick in figuring out what roads are what there. I wanted to be clear about Garrison being open. And then I just wanted to ask two things. One is, how many vendors, I'm sorry. Yeah, how many dates were we open last year for the market?
Ooh, I'd have to count. I want to say a little bit more than ten, but we did have to cancel a few dates because of inclement weather, air quality issues. So I think ultimately, we were maybe open around eight or so.
Okay, but this is a couple fewer, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
It just occurred to me, which I think will make it more in demand in the dates that you have it, since you don't have it as frequently.
That is one of the reasons we decided to hold it a little less often this year. We actually received more inquiries and more demand from vendors participating in less frequent markets. Now they have opportunities maybe to spend time with their family in the summertime or participate in other markets around the state.
Yeah, and to Councilwoman Elsoafi's point, the advertising will be really important to make sure people are aware of which days are open and which days not. Have you looked at using the banners that are along Michigan Avenue? I think we had summer market banners in the past.
Yes, absolutely. So the DDA does fund and install banners, so that's something we can definitely look at, just to activate the space a little bit more closely around Bryant Branch Library. That's a great idea. Thank you.
And I love that location, that it is a little less traffic without a road going right through the middle of it, and that there's more green space and places for people to sit in trees and things. So I think that's a great location. My last question, I don't know that you can answer this, but as regarding Peace Park One, do we know when that's going to be opening? And is that something that we could consider having a similar market in the future once it opens between the two parking decks between, off West Village Drive on the south side of Michigan Avenue?
Yeah, I'm probably not the best person to give you a timeline for the peace parks, but in terms of activating those spaces when they're done, that's something we're definitely considering. Just once we see the final park installed, make sure that it works in terms of, you know, all the things that we need to make logistical for vendors. So it's definitely on our list, and we're eager to take a look at the park when it's done.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I missed what you said about the opening day.
I'm not the best person to answer.
Councilwoman, if I may.
Yes, Chief.
So, thank you. So I think we're projected to the beginning of June, mid-June, for the Peace Park. Obviously, who said that?
I'm sorry, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. You called me. I was like, okay. So, yes, this year, unless there are foreseeable circumstances that do, you know, timelines can change based on circumstances. So that is ideally what the timeline that they provided us. The council will be informed, because we will be doing, obviously, a ribbon cutting for both of the parks, both one-point-five and one.
Excellent.
Thank you so much.
All right, Councilwoman Inos.
Vendors still apply for an application to be included?
That's a great question.
Speaker on.
Can a vendor still apply for an application to be included?
They actually can. We have a waitlist going on now, so in case any vendors drop off or some are not able to be licensed completely to participate, we will then go to the waitlist. So we're happy to share that link with council in case you know of any vendors that may want to be added to the waitlist.
Yeah, and they can also put it on the CD TV on the rerun. So where would they go to our City of Dearborn?
Yes, it would be, I think, on our Economic Development Department. So I'll make sure to share the link with council afterwards, just to make sure we're going to the right list.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
Laura, thank you so much for your work. I can't wait to see how it comes out.
Likewise, thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, any other questions or comments on the market? Here and see and none, unanimous rule shall be attached. Next item. Oh, ma'am, okay, ma'am, we have to have you come up, ma'am, we have to have you come up and address the council with your name and address. Thank you for touching that. Sorry.
Hi, Lynn Herrick, two-seven-five-zero, Greenly Park. Once that new thing is open, will the farmer's market be moved to the new location in between the two parking lots?
Laura?
That is an option we're currently exploring. We just want to make sure that once the park is fully fleshed out, obviously, parks don't always reflect the site plans that were actually created, so we just want to make sure that it's the best space to activate, but we're definitely considering it.
Because are they going to have music there and everything? That's, that's what the scuttlebutt is.
I know that there's rent.
They're going to have food trucks, music, and vendors, and a lot of other things.
Yeah, I know that Peace Park was really created to activate a vibrant space with music, like you said, and food trucks, so there's definitely going to be amenities conducive to that there. I just cannot a hundred percent guarantee that we're going to move the summer market there. There's a lot of factors that are weighed into those types of decisions.
That would be nice if it was.
Yeah, we're very excited about Peace. We're very excited about Peace Park One, so if the possibility works out that we can move there, then we will.
All right, thank you, Ms. Herrick. Thank you for your comment. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, here and see and know their comments. Unanimous rule shall be attached. Next item.
Item twenty-six, resolution by Councilmembers Elsoafi and Herrick, awarding a contractor to Red Zone Robotics in the amount of hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand four-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars for phase one of the Colson Palmer Stormwater Rehabilitation, Dearborn Job Number twenty-two-three dash zero-two-eight.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Colson Palmer twelve-foot diameter storm line begins around Colson Palmer intersection, goes along Mercury Drive and alongside of the Michigan Avenue through TPC Golf Course and to the Rouge River. This line will be restored to its full twelve-foot opening area to increase storage area for storm water and allow it to carry sufficiently, significantly higher amounts of storm water to the Rouge River and reduce flooding risk of over fifty-four hundred residents and parcels that are bounded by Tyreman, Schaefer, Michigan Avenue, and Greenfield. The forty-two-inch brick combined sewer located on West Schaefer, north of Michigan Avenue and between Schaefer and Maple, will be inspected using laser and solar profiling to evaluate its condition and assess the structural integrity and the need of any rehabilitation work. Purchasing on behalf of the Department of Public Works and Facilities Engineering Division recommends award of the contract for storm tunnel assessments to Red Zone Robotics, which submitted the lowest responsive and responsible bid. The requested amount is a hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand nine-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and a thirty-nine thousand five-hundred-and-fifty dollar as well from Project V zero-two-zero-two-three, for a total of one-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand four-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. This will impact the city, the community by reducing our flooding risks in the area bounded by Tyreman, Schaefer, Michigan Avenue, and Greenfield. Any questions or comments on this item? Councilman Elsoafi.
Thank you, Council President. I know it's mentioned in here, fifty-four hundred residents. They'll be impacted or reducing the risk, but this is only phase one. So this is in itself not going to reduce the risk for flooding, correct?
Okay, let's have the director come up.
Good evening, Council President and Council. This is just the start of that Colson Palmer project. Red Zone is going to do a sonar scan for the entire line, and it'll tell us the condition of the line and the depth of the sediment in the line.
Yeah, we, that's exactly what I said. I guess the councilman wants to know if this is not going to help. I mean, we have to have a plan.
No, no.
This is a plan.
This is the start of the plan, and once we have that assessment, we will do the requirements needed to make that a viable stormwater line. They will come back to council.
My question was that timeline. I understand this is phase one. This itself is not going to help residents or reduce the risk, but what is the timeline to complete the entire project? What does that look like?
I believe it has to be completed by twenty-twenty-six due to the funding source, but we're trying to get it done instantly.
Right, but also, I don't want to draw an inference. Councilman, that's a good question, but you cannot possibly know the answer, because you don't know what the assessment is.
Correct.
Right, I mean, that the whole purpose.
Alls I can do is the grant funding.
The grant finding timeline. That's a good idea.
Timeline, that's it.
So that's the longest we can do.
Longest we can run is twenty-twenty-six.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Dirk. All right, here and see and none, unanimous rule shall be attached. Next item.
Item number twenty-seven, resolution by Councilmember Abraham and Elsoafi, authorizing the first of two one-year renewal options for the contract with Cumboli Nursery, Inc., in the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand dollars for tree planting services and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Purchasing on behalf of the Department of Public Works recommends a one-year renewal contract for tree planting services at the cost of two-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand dollars to Cumboli Nursery, which provided these services for the previous two years. The contract renewal shall be before a term of one year. The contract will provide the city with qualified contractor for annual tree planting services. The city tree planting allows for a free tree replacement for residents that have an easement tree removed during construction zone or engineering projects. There's also going to be trees planted as needed from residents that can call in. I did talk to Deputy Golich, and she indicated, because we had some questions, these are going to be sound, healthy, zone trees that are one and three-quarter inch diameter, so which is a pretty good sized tree. It's also going to be either ball or bird lapped or container, and that's because we have two, four, six, eight, ten, well over a dozen types of trees. So everybody knows in the past, trees were planted that broke your easement, were too small for the side yard. We're trying with our arborist to make sure that we put the right tree that fits and will grow within your easement, because some easements are wider than others and not to break your cement. So Cumboli has performed the service in the past, and there's been no issues. Any questions or comments on this item? Councilman Paris.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to make sure that it was correct, what I heard at the committee of the whole this last Thursday, because it would be some information for the viewing public and the people that are in our audience, that last year, we planted eight-hundred-and-eighty-four trees, and then this year, we're expecting to plant a thousand or over a thousand.
We'll have the director answer, but I believe you're exactly right, Councilman. Let's have the director give that to the poll.
It was DPW Director, yes, that is correct. Last year, we planted over eight hundred, with some of the other pieces over a thousand trees, with some grant-funded trees. This year, we are trying to shoot for a thousand trees based on budget. We want to expend this budget, get as many trees that we can replace in neighborhood as possible.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure on the numbers.
Yes, thank you.
Councilman Elsoafi.
Well, it's a great program, and I know some people last year filled out the application, got a tree installed. Some filled out the application towards the end of the season, and they never got a tree installed. Are you picking up on those and starting with that?
We have all the applications that were turned into us, and now that we're getting close to when we can replant trees due to weather and other things, that the fall we have to end due to inclement weather. It's not good to plant trees in frozen ground, but yes, we are starting over. If somebody does not receive their tree they put in last year, just send us a quick email.
Well, that'll have to, right? You have the list.
We have the list. I'm just saying, for some reason, if there was a miscommunication, feel free to send again.
Thank you, Director. Any other questions or comments? Here and see and none, unanimous rule shall be attached. Next item.
Item twenty-eight, resolution by Councilmembers Herrick and Elsoafi, approving a resolution in support of the proposed Michigan Ground Emergency Transportation Program, currently being considered by the State House of Representatives.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. This is a request is for the council to approve a resolution in support of the proposed Michigan Ground Emergency Transportation, or GMET program. This federal program, which would be managed by the state of Michigan, would potentially allow the Dearborn Fire Department to collect additional reimbursements for Medicaid patients. Based on early projections, the Dearborn Fire Department expects to collect up to additional two-point-five million dollars should this program be adopted by the state legislator. The Dearborn Fire Department predicts that if passed, this program will potentially increase EMS revenue as well as over, of nearly two million dollars. And I asked the chief to come up and speak on this. I know chief, the council had some questions. This is not something normal that the council has done in the past to send a letter in support of a resolution to our state legislature, but you made a very good point on Thursday, so I'd just like you to reiterate to the residents of why this is important for us, and hopefully it does pass.
Absolutely. Fire Chief Joseph Murray, thank you, council. Good evening, council. The GMET program is a federal program. It's been adopted by a number of states around this, Illinois, Indiana, Ohio, for example. It's a federal program which allows us to seek out additional reimbursements for Medicaid patients when we transport them to the hospital. Right now, it costs us about fifteen hundred dollars to do a transport of a patient, EMS patient, and with Medicaid currently, the reimbursement is probably bringing in about three hundred, three hundred fifty dollars at the most, so.
So only about a third. Right now, our costs are three times the amount that we're receiving reimbursements.
Yes. So we have a pretty significant Medicaid population in town. About thirty-five percent of our residents are on Medicaid program. So currently, we're working right now with a number of different groups to enact legislation to, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, chief. I'm sorry. I'm trying to keep it to one meeting.
No, no problem. Thank you. So with this, with this program, it has to be, as part of this federal program, it has to be managed by the state of Michigan. So the MDHHS, we've initially worked, tried to work with them. They weren't initially wanting to do it. They said they needed some assistance with infrastructure to manage the program. So we actually have teamed up, the Michigan Fire Chiefs, the MML, Michigan Township Association, have formed basically a coalition, and we got a sponsor in the House of Representatives, Mike McCall. He's introduced legislation, it's House Bill five-six-nine-five. And that's essentially what this legislation does, is it provides funding and requires the MDHHS to manage this program. So our estimates based off of our call volume from last year is that we'll bring in an additional two to two-and-a-half million dollars annually with this program. This program only benefits municipal EMS services, so it doesn't, it doesn't benefit the private ambulance, but it doesn't harm them either. So there's no harm for it. All it really, all it really does is bring us some additional revenue, requires the state to do some reporting and managing of the program, and it's pretty much a win-win.
Excellent, and you have support from the leagues and the associations as well.
Yep.
We do appreciate it, chief. Councilman Elsoafi?
Thank you so much, chief. Thank you for being here. This could be a game changer for the City of Dearborn, over two million dollars in revenue. So I appreciate you looking into this, but I just want to make sure as far as impacting the quality of care for Medicaid patients, there is no impact here to the service or the quality of care at all?
No, absolutely. There'll be no change in the actual service. And actually, you can argue that it will benefit the people, because with additional revenues coming in, that's better for recruitment and retention overall. You know, pay and wages, I mean, obviously, it all contributes to the greater general fund. So, you know, more stable community here is going to attract more firefighters, paramedics to our organization. So I think it's, it'll have secondary positive effects, but definitely no reduction in care.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I appreciate you speaking to that.
Thank you, chief. Any other questions or comments? Here in seeing none, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item 29, resolution by Councilmembers Salud and Alswafi recognizing leaders advancing in helping communities at 835 Mason Street, Suite A160 as a nonprofit organization in the city of Dearborn for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming license and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The LAHC is a registered 501(c)(3) program, a nonprofit organization that is requesting recognition by the city for the purpose of obtaining a gaming license from the Michigan Rural State Lottery, so that they can hold a raffle fundraiser. LHAC has been operating since 1992 and has met all the necessary requirements with the state and is dedicated to promoting education, culture, health, and social affairs in the community. This item is being requested to have immediate effect. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item 30, resolution by Councilmembers Salud and Inos appointing Deanna Yunus to the Election Commission with a term ending June 30th, 2026, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I just want to remind our residents, these are, commissions are very, very important. We'd like to thank everyone who's devoting their time as a volunteer to help move their city forward. Everyone has a role in having Dearborn be what it is today, and these appointments are people that stepped forward and said they're willing to give some time out of their lives to help our city go forward. So this council's new appointment is for the council, city, our council appointee, Deanna Yunus, to the Election Commission. Ms. Yunus will serve the Election Commission until June 30th, 2026. Any questions or comments on this? She did appear in front of the council on Thursday with her extensive resume. She did work for the Attorney General's office and is an attorney as well. So we look forward to having her serve. Hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item 31, resolution by Councilmembers Herrick and Hamud concurring in the appointment of David Good to the Dearborn Historical Commission with a term ending June 30th, 2027, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And again, we'd like to recognize the appointment from the mayor of David Good to serve in the Dearborn Historical Advisory Commission for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2027. Any questions or comments on this? Okay, hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Resolution by Councilmembers Alswafi and Inos concurring in the appointment of Mohammed Bazi to the East Dearborn Downtown Development Authority with a term ending June 30th, 2026, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, Mr. Mohammed Bazi did get a chance, did not get a chance, I'm sorry, to be sworn in due to a loss of family member as last appointment. So we are, he is coming back to be re sworn in for this position, again, East Dearborn Downtown Authority, term ending June 30th, 2026. Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
No other agenda items from the clerk, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Okay, before I open up to my colleagues, a couple things I'd just like to bring forward. My colleagues are, oh, these are for today? They might have left, okay. We do have council, the council has authority to have an internship program, and we have a young man here, Rami, how do you pronounce it, Hermes?
Hemis.
Hemis. We want to get him on the camera there. All right, you got him. Rami is, is his first day here. He's a short-term intern. Something that we really like to do on the council for my colleagues is a 60, 90-day window for some of these young people that are out for summer and want to get, this was a very contentious meeting, so I hope you learned a lot from it. Wait till Thursday, we have some coyote issues, too. So we'd like to thank you, Rami, for being here, and appreciate that you're keeping up the dress code as well. All right. Absolutely. Couple more things for me. I wanted to make sure, of course, to wish everybody a very, very happy Mother's Day coming up. Obviously, you know, we can't do anything with our mothers and, without our mothers. And most people have to remember, I think, the biggest thing. Your mother sometimes tells you things that you don't want to hear, but you need to hear, and it's very good. So we're, we're all blessed. Those that, whose parents are not with them, you know, God bless them, and, you know, it's, it's a great time to reflect. Mother's Day and Father's Days are always very important. So I want to celebrate Mother's Day and recognize that for everyone out there. Finally, before I turn over to my colleagues, just want to make sure residents take note to this. We've had a lot of rain lately. People ask me, and there's a saying, you know, there's nothing better than your neighbor. The best thing you could do to keep your neighbor a good neighbor is make sure you cut your grass and maintain your outside of your home. It's, you know, we joke about it. It's kind of like the broken glass theory that I do subscribe to. Broken window theory. Broken window theory, sorry. But anyways, there's been a lot of rain lately. There is an enforcement sweep week, Chief, coming up soon. What is, do you have the dates or not, off the top of the head? I know it's coming up soon. I know our communications department has been tagging a lot of the council members to get their following growing, because I know that we have a lot of followers. We're pushing it out there. Great job by our communications department. But I just want everybody to make sure that they, you know, think about that when you're, when you're out there maintaining your property. It does matter in Dearborn. It does matter that you maintain your property. Your neighbors do appreciate it. It becomes infectious. When your house looks good and your neighbor's house looks good, the next neighbor's got to have to do it. He doesn't have no choice. It just looks better. So I want to just make sure that we keep that in mind now that the spring is coming, the grass is starting to grow really high. I want to open up to my colleagues. Councilwoman Herrick.
Well, it's a time of year. Graduations are upon us, and I'd like to be the first to congratulate the class of 2024 at our high schools, but most importantly, the college seniors who are graduating, and very most importantly, my son Brendan Erickson Hay, who just graduated from the University of Michigan, Ross School of Business, with his BBA. And he, we had a whirlwind weekend of a couple graduation ceremonies and moved him to Chicago, where he will be beginning his career in just about a month and a half in business consulting. And his family could not be more proud of Brendan and his accomplishments so far. And Brendan, I love you, and I can't wait to see what you do next.
Oh, that's, that's great. That's great, Leslie. I know we've, I know I have, and some of my colleagues have been able to be at his, when he graduated high school, in the journey, and I know he went out west for a minute and came back. I think he made the right decision at Michigan, and I wish him the best. Good young man, and am I wrong with Eagle Scout?
Yes, he is.
Eagle Scout.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a big deal. It's a big deal. Great young man, I'm sure you're proud of him. And we, I personally watched him grow up, so I think he's going to, he's going to do great. Whoever hires him is going to be lucky. Thank you, Councilman, of course. Councilman Paris.
Thank you, Council President. Just a few things that I'd like to make mention of. I want to wish a very special birthday to Corinna Campos, who celebrates a very significant birthday tomorrow on May 8th. And the reason why I want to bring this up, because a lot of people know her house on Brady Street, and she's a resident there and very appreciative of her celebrating significant birthday tomorrow. But she's also known for her hospitality, recognizing and celebrating the culture, customs, and ethnicity and inclusiveness of the city, with her musings, her posting, and her placing of local, state, national, and international flags in particular, on holidays and events in front of her home. So I just want to wish her a happy birthday. She's really contributed to our community. She was a flight attendant and one thing to be aware of, military aircraft command, that she was involved in going throughout the globe, you know, with our troops, both to and from. So I just want to give her some accolades for that.
Absolutely. We want to wish her a happy birthday, Ken. I think some of those things are top secret, so you better be careful.
That's right. I didn't reveal too much.
I know she's been big on that.
I did not reveal how old she is.
She, if anybody drives down Brady, you can't miss her house. She is a wonderful human being. If we had more people like that in the world, we would all, this would be a much, much better place. I didn't want to interrupt you, Ken, but she's a staple in the city, and as you said, very festive and very supportive throughout for Dearborn.
Absolutely. I just want to give everyone a reminder that we have an annual Shred Day coming up on Saturday, May 11th, 7:30 a.m. to 12 noon at our DPW yard, so people are aware of that. Couple things that are kind of near and dear to me, because this occurs every year on an annual basis, and I want to recognize people. We just had on May 4th International Firefighters Day. We have lost a lot of firefighters back on 9/11 that really brought this to light about what our firefighters do, running into danger all the time. We have had a number of firefighters throughout Michigan and throughout the country, and even within our Dearborn Fire Department, that have lost their lives because of the effects of their job, whether it be from cancer or other reasons for them passing on. But I just want to give them that recognition back on May 4th. I also want to make sure people know that that's why I'm wearing my tie tonight for the firefighters, but I'll also be wearing a tie next week for our police officers, because next week, Saturday coming up, or, yeah, this next week coming up Saturday, we'll be starting Police Week, starting that Saturday, and I want to recognize police officers everywhere. We have lost a number of police officers over the years in our own city of Dearborn. And last but not least, I just wanted a question for our city clerk, if you might have any updates, Mr. Clerk, in regards to, you made mention, one of our last meetings, that the last day of our deputy clerk just occurred not too long ago. And I'm just wondering if there's any status on, looking on the hiring of another deputy clerk?
Well, thanks for the question. I'm hoping that we can move forward. Unfortunately, I believe I've hit a brick wall at this point. I mean, I could probably talk about an hour on this subject, but I'm going to give you, I'll give you, I guess, the brief synopsis of what has happened in the last couple, two or three weeks. I've asked the HR department to post the position, which they did on April 15th, and it ended 10 days later on April 25th, and we had three candidates that met that deadline and were deemed qualified to go to the interviewing process. We were supposed to interview that week. For some reason, it didn't happen, and then we were going to interview last week. It didn't happen again. We were supposed to interview this week, and we still have not set up interviews for, for that deputy position, which I feel is very, very important. But in the meantime, without my knowledge or consent, they reposted the position. Again, even though we had three candidates that met the deadline and, and were qualified. So they reposted it, they changed the salary range, and they also had no ending date on it.
All right, George, is that, that's the HR department?
Correct. So, you know, so now HR-
Did you send us, I think you just sent us an email on that, right?
No, I did not.
Oh, that was-
I sent you something.
Something else, okay.
But, you know, so now the HR department is telling me that there's five candidates, so they've added two more candidates to, to the original three that met the deadline. And I just think personally, I hate to say it, but I think it's morally wrong. I think it's unethical to, to do it again, to make these three people wait almost two weeks now.
Yeah, I think what we could do is, I mean, we'll have to find out what happened with the HR, but the process, at the end of the day, is the decision of the department head. Is that correct? You will make that decision. So we'll have to find out why HR added more people to it, but usually, if they give you more people, that might not be bad for you to choose from. But Chief, just, I don't know if there's anything you could do. I know the HR department is under, under the, yeah, it's under the civil service, right?
That's correct. It is under the civil service.
Yeah, so I know they do have meetings there, too. We have a representative, two of our representatives from the council, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's very, very important for me to fill that position, and I feel that it's just been stalled, and we may, we may even lose some of the people that initially wanted to apply for it, because we've waited a couple weeks without setting up interviews. That's never happened before. I've gone out two or three times to get a deputy clerk, and this is the first time this has happened. So I'm disappointed.
If I just wanted to say, just in closing of that, you know, I'm surprised at this really, of this extent, but, you know, we've got elections coming up in August and November.
Right.
So, I mean, a process of hiring a deputy clerk is paramount for leadership and getting work done within the city clerk's office.
Absolutely.
That's why I'd like to know what the status was for our deputy clerk.
Yeah, no, no, I appreciate the question. I'm sure you knew the answer, but you go to the, you go to the civil service commission's meeting, so that's not under our purview. The HR director, I mean, is not under our purview. So, I mean, we, Mr. Roamer might correct? We have two appointees there?
That's correct. She is appointed by the civil service.
Right, so what we can do, if you, on your own autonomy, you can contact our two appointees, which, by the way, have excellent attendance records, are probably the most, two people that are there, and find out what happened. And George, you know, you have to do what you have to do. You're elected, and you have to find out what's, what the issue is for that. But there's nothing on the council that's trying to stop or hold up any, any appointee, I'm sorry, any position whatsoever, so.
I agree. Thank you.
I just want to make sure, you know, that we get through this.
Thank you.
All right, Councilman Inos.
Yes. Seeing it's Nurses Week, I would like to add a special shout-out to my mom for her 50 years of service as a nurse, and she's still on the job. So Mom-
No way.
Great job, and-
Still on the job, Gary, should we say it?
Still on the job.
Still on the job, hey. You got to love it, when they said if you, if you, it's not work if you love what you're doing, right?
And Happy Mother's Day.
Absolutely. Anyone else from my council? Councilman Abraham.
I don't think I can top the mom-nurse story, but for those of us that went to Fortson High School, our Fortson Varsity Club Alumni Banquet is this Thursday, May 9th, at 6:00 p.m. at Park Place. In the last two years, for those of you that have been following, we helped establish with the athletic department at Fortson the Hall of Fame. And so we will have the Hall of Fame induction ceremony Thursday night for the 2024 class, as well as we will award Hall of Fame rings to the 2023 inductees.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilman Abraham. Anything from the chief and the administration?
Yes, sir.
You were quiet, you were quiet today.
I said, yes, sir, we definitely have a couple of announcements. One, a message from the mayor who says, you know, Happy Mother's Day to all the wonderful mothers out there, especially the mothers at, the mothers of the council who've given life to those who serve with, with purpose for the city. But he said that it's mothers and council that tell us what we don't want to hear, so.
That's right.
That is a message from, from the mayor. I do just want to reiterate, and I think, Council President, and I appreciate your leadership and this body, reiterating the commitment that this administration and the city has to Camp Dearborn. And whether, you know, I hope those ancillary concerns or issues that were raised today will be addressed by our, our team and our administration. But I did want to reiterate and double down and anchor on the fact that this administration and this council have made decisions to ensure the safety, security, and the, the investment of Camp Dearborn, one that has not been done in the past. So I want to just thank this body for standing by the administration and making those investments together. So I wanted to just say thank you and make sure that our audience, on the other side of the screen, hello, understands that this administration and this council is very much committed to Camp Dearborn.
Thank you, Chief. We appreciate that. And since you brought that up, I'd rather just put it on the record now And since you brought that up, I'd rather just put it on the record now while we're still in the legal forum before we have to do a special meeting. But can we get a commitment? I'd like to see if anybody does not support, you know, that, that you, uh, have a moratorium on this, uh, 17th and 22nd. It was continuous, the same people about the dates are coming up. Uh, I know the mayor's not here, but I know that you have the power as well. Unless you want us to call for a special meeting, I would like the commitment from the administration to halt any, any, uh, processes until we get, uh, till we have a meeting, find out what's going on.
So you're offering that?
Well, I'd like to see if she, if she, if she would do it voluntarily, would be good. If not, we'll have to, we'll have to go either call a meeting or we can take as an item. I don't, we'll have to ask with Mr. Roemer. But Chief, do you feel better if the council passes a resolution asking for us, uh, for a halt on any, uh, trailer removals or title seizures until we have a meeting?
Well, I'll say, Council President, I, I appreciate the, the, uh, the option. Um, what I would say is that the, uh, and I'm very much confident, I think the, the, of the process that was followed by the, uh, by the administration and by the, uh, Camp Dearborn, um, I think the issues that were brought up today will be addressed at a timely fashion, um, and.
Yeah, some of them are Friday, that's the issue.
And, and definitely our team will follow back up with them.
I know, but the, the problem is, I'm just concerned, you know, so Mr. Roemer, uh, if we have a motion on the floor, since we're still in the public meeting, uh, how's the proper way to handle if we want to pass a resolution, uh, asking, uh, asking the administration to halt all titles and, uh, and forfeitures on Camp Dearborn until we have a, a meeting?
You just need the traditional offer of support and then.
Okay, I will, I will offer it.
Nice support, but with.
Yeah, I want, that's what I wanted you to do.
Council President, I think we, we can have a study session before the, uh.
There's no way, Chief, we have, I tried. That's, I wanted to, that's why I wanted to get a commitment, but let's just pass it so that you could send it immediately, Jackie, with immediate effect to Camp Dearborn, to Scott and Jimmy and up there and our director, Fletcher. And Mr. Golich, you're here to witness it. So the, the offer on the table is to cease and desist all forfeitures of titles, any enforcement action or collection methods regarding Camp Dearborn trailer, trailers and TV2 until council has a, a meeting, uh, regarding this issue. And that is offered by myself.
Yeah, and then I'll support.
You wanted to add something to it? You can add something. Supported by Councilman Hamud, go ahead.
Can we just do a sunset date on it, like 30 days or something like that?
I don't have no problem with that. Okay, and that, uh, Mr. Roemer, then we will put a sunset clause on 30 days from today with immediate effect. If no action is taken within 30 days, that, uh, then the council will forfeit its right. Any questions or comments for my colleagues on this?
I just have a comment.
Councilman Abraham.
And I know you made, Council President, you made it pretty clear when you get people lined up here at seven o'clock at night with the same message, um, I, I didn't say anything early here, but it, it seems like something went sideways. Either there's miscommunication, lack of communication, lack of education, or, or, or something else that, that I didn't mention. But obviously, people did not feel like they were offered reasonable solutions to the situations. Um, and I think we need to find a path to success for these people. I always say there's two sides to every story and, and the third one might be the truth, you know? So, um, but the fact that you have three or four people lined up saying, you know, we were told we can't pay our fees for the year and our choice is to surrender a title or the following year you'll be assessed fees in excess of $5,000, I think is not the way the city should do business. I don't believe necessarily that was the message that was conveyed. At least I hope it wasn't by the city officials, but multiple people said that's what they heard. And that's very concerning. And, and I don't think we should be threatening our leaseholders, our residents, our guests in a fashion like that to surrender. I don't care how bad the trailer is. Um, and honestly, I don't think we have the authority to tell somebody they cannot sell their trailer. If you have a state title, a registered, uh, title, I don't know how you can prevent somebody from selling an asset that they own. There are property rights in this city, in the state and in this country. And it's really concerning that that's the message that multiple people stated they heard that they could not sell their own property within the camp grounds anyway.
Absolutely, thank you very much, uh.
Council President?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I just, uh, I, I know that the motion has been, uh, set at the, at the table and it's been committed, but if, you know, the, I agreed to the moratorium, uh, to the, the day of the, the study session. I think that, uh, the study session will provide more context to a lot of the, to the councilman's point, the information that was, uh, sent out by the, uh, you know, by the camp, uh, team and provide more context to, you know, the, the approach that we're taking and, and the reason and the rationale why.
I appreciate it. All right, any other questions?
I just want to.
Yeah, Councilman Abraham?
Chief Staff, with all the respect to you, I, I, I've been doing this a long time and when three or four people come up and say they heard the same thing, that is very concerning that either it'll be your title or it's gonna cost you $5,000 next year. Somebody's sending the wrong message. And I don't care what condition that trailer it is in, there's appropriate ways to communicate and that is not it. And if it's not in writing, if it's not in the letters we sent out, then our officials shouldn't be telling people that.
Thank you, Councilman. All right, any, uh, we have an offer and, uh, a support on the table? Any objection to a unanimous roll? Okay, unanimous rolls shall be attached. Mr. Clerk, do you have that as a record?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Mr. Golich, I know you're aware, I know that our director's not here, Mr. Fletcher, but we will send that over to him. And then Jackie, I'm gonna give this to you so you make sure we're on me, that we contact every one of these people and tell them that there is, uh, the council voted tonight unanimously to cease and desist all actions until further notice within 30 days they have for us to provide a meeting, which then will be notified by. All right, um, Chief, is there anything else from the administration?
Yes, there is.
Okay, go ahead.
So, on that note, um, just, uh, just wanted to inform the, the council on a few things that the administration has been, uh, up to over the past, uh, few months slash weeks. Um, one I wanted to, to inform, um, some of the council is aware of the, the butterfly garden that is being, uh, um, created in the South End of Dearborn. The mayor had a vision and an initiative of, you know, really creating, uh, community spaces, green spaces for residents to, um, one, feel ownership of, you know, being a part of the, the kind of the placemaking there and the creation of the park. Um, so we're happy to say that this Friday, um, the administration, the mayor and his team will be out there. Um, and we welcome the council to, to be a part of that, to plant the, uh, the final, the final, uh, phase of the butterfly garden in the South End, um, which will be the planting of the, uh, the plants, the roses, all the good stuff that will make the, will bring it to life. Um, it's an exciting project. It's something that, um, was piloted by, uh, you know, the administration. This is the first of, of its kind. Uh, and the success of this will be kind of replicated across the city. So we're excited to see, uh, see this come to life. Um, so that is Friday from 1 to 5 for the, the council.
1 to 5, thank you, Chief. Where, where's it at in the South End?
It is on Holly and Weaver, right behind Arabian Village. There was an empty, uh, you know, plot of land that was just an open grass field that was owned by the city. And now, uh, when you visit it, you'll see it is a beautiful, interactive space. One thing that I'll mention too, and the mayor was very akin around bringing partners to the table and not just having the city be the, kind of the sole, uh, you know, provider and creator of this park. The reason why was we wanted the, the neighbors to be involved, to be a part of, you know, something that is happening in their neighborhood, community organizations that serve the, uh, the neighborhood to be able to provide, uh, of, you know, something back to the residents. And then obviously our city and our employees to be able to be a part of something that, you know, the city is putting together. Um, and it, it is actually a wonderful project that, uh, we, we see, uh, the success already from just the, the, the team building that it's created amongst the, uh, the departments and the different, uh, divisions within the city, um, but also from the community who's, uh, who's been involved from, uh, the beginning. So it's, it's exciting.
Thank you, we do appreciate that, Chief.
Just the, uh, the, on, on the Council President.
Just on that one, Chief, just on that one, there's a couple of council people just want me to comment on that. So if you don't mind, I want to let them, uh, speak on that and then we'll go back to you. Councilman Elswafi?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say, I did a walk through, uh, prior to the rose garden being implemented and it was just a patch of grass. Uh, so seeing it again, uh, I just happened to be in the area during Access Service Day and then I walked through in the area and it looks beautiful. I know it's still in process, but there's a lot of beautiful energy around it. Uh, the neighborhood is involved. It's just gonna be a great piece of art and I'm looking forward to it. Thank you so much.
Councilman, uh, Paris.
Thank you, Council President. I, I just want to say that, uh, been down there just, uh, two days ago or whatever and seen all the walkways and, uh, what's going on with that, uh, butterfly garden. And it looks like it might be a very good project. It's a long time in coming. Uh, I know, uh, Michigan State, uh, has been involved in this through, uh, one of their interns and friends of the Rouge have made mention of it too. I appreciate that. But a question that I have though is, what do we do once this is done? Who is gonna have responsibility for maintaining it?
Yeah, that's a great question, Councilman. And I think that it's, it's a, uh, it's a team effort. And I say that because, one, the, the park was created to, one, let's just start from the beginning. The beginning of the maintenance of the park was the city had to go out and mow the grass, um, and to ensure that, you know, every, every so often, a few weeks, uh, for, for maintenance purposes. Now, we actually have, you know, uh, the MSU Mayor's Fellow that came in was a landscape architect, fourth year landscape architect, uh, in, at, at Michigan State. And the purpose of the, the garden was for it to be a naturally, like, to be wildflowers and naturally like, kind of sustain itself. It's very low maintenance. Um, it was, it's a kind of combination between the city and, uh, the residents. Um, when we met with the residents from the beginning, it was, it was, there was a common understanding of, you know, this is a park that's gonna be adopted by its, its residents. It's also, uh, been adopted by Access for Service Week. So every year they'll have a service, a team there to be able to service the, the park as well. And then in addition to that, our team will be out there, uh, you know, for, in the first, uh, the first year just to be able to water the plants to make sure that, cause I think that, that it's the first year that needs the, uh, the maintenance the most. And then after that, it should be self-sufficient, um, with little to no maintenance. And that will be supported by the residents, by Access's Service Day, in addition to some support, whatever the city has to, um, support. Yeah, absolutely. But it's a great question.
Chief, you can continue.
Absolutely, I got some more good stuff to come. So, uh, we talked about, um, you know, the Council President mentioned the importance of, you know, keeping, uh, the city of Dearborn as, as beautiful and as pristine as it deserves because that's what our residents deserve. Um, we have mentioned Sweep Week. Sweep Week is May 20th. Um, that will be the, that will be the week that our team goes, uh, goes onto the, the streets and ensures that, you know, anything, any violations, uh, will be written up and, um, you know, that are addressed by, by the city. Um, one of the other things I wanted to mention, in a few weeks back, we talked a little bit about, you know, the mayor and his team walking. We actually did our second walkabout. The mayor had about.
Sheena on the video.
Yeah, did you? So we did, our, our first was the South End. Um, it was last, I believe last week. Um, this week we were on, uh, we were in East Dearborn on Warren Avenue, air, in the Warren Avenue area. And it was just so nice to see because while we were walking through, we had garbage bags and pickers and, um, you know, the mayor and around a host of like 20 to, 20 to 25 folks from our team kind of walking through the, the areas in the street. And we were just pleasantly surprised at how well-maintained, um, the area was and how clean it was. We did obviously find garbage on the way, but it was very encouraging to see the residents, you know, keep up with their home, making sure that, you know, there was no garbage in front. So I just wanted to give a huge shout out to those residents who continue to, you know, uh, maintain but also beautify their homes. It is a statement. Um, this is a statement of the work that, you know, this administration, this council has been doing since day one, which is making sure that we're doing our part as a city, but there is an equal part that needs to be done by our residents and taking ownership and pride of your home and this city because it is something that we should all be proud of. Um, and one that I think will be an example for the state and for the nation because we're, we're just that good. Um, so I just wanted to mention those pieces because I think that was just kind of following to the, the Council President's point around the importance of keeping, you know, ourselves, you know, actively involved in the, the keeping up of Dearborn and making sure we keep our Dearborn, our, our streets clean and doing so with the administration's support, with the council's support. But more importantly, it has to be a partnership with the residents. Let me see what else I got for you. That's it, that's all I have. And also to the, uh, Fortson Tractors, because I am a Fortson Tractor all the way. So we, uh, and if the, if the mayor was here as well, we'd say, make sure you support, uh, you know, the, uh, the varsity club.
Did the mayor chip into the varsity club?
Yes, he did.
We have an accountant right here. All right, I just want to make sure.
The mayor was very generous in supporting the Fortson Varsity Club.
That's excellent.
Go Tractors.
All right, thank you very much. So one more thing, Councilwoman Herrick, and then we're gonna move on to the clerk and our public comment.
Just really quickly, um, I noticed that the city website, I know we're working diligently on introducing a new, more robust, user-friendly, um, informative website that will be rolled out in the not-too-distant future. Um, but I just noticed that the commissions list is not up to date. Um, specifically, I was looking at the civil service commission. So if we could please ask the administration to update those lists. I know that that's a good resource for council as well as the public. Absolutely.
Thank you so much, Councilman. All right, Mr. Clerk, anything that you'd like to add from your department?
Uh, you know what? I'm just gonna make a final comment on, on the deputy clerk situation again and, and to get, uh, Councilman Paris off the hook a little bit because he did ask the question, but I would have brought it up, brought it up either way, cause I feel that important, it's that important that we get the deputy clerk position resolved as quickly as possible.
I think it's clear, George, have you done anything about it? Did you contact the HR department?
Yes, I've tried many times.